Board of County Commissioners meeting will come to order. Let the record show today is November the 14th. It is 9 o'clock a.m. I would ask if Mr. Lyons would be so kind and lead us in the pledge of allegiance, sir.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Yeah, I was in a meeting yesterday and gavel was hit. Called the meeting to order and everybody stood up. What have they done? And I just went right into the pledge of allegiance.
They do not mince words, Tom.
I guess not. Secretary, would you conduct the roll, please?
Commissioner Flower.
Here.
Commissioner Kanda.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Present.
Attorney Clint Smith. He's gone.
Suspiciously missing.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper, present.
Thank you. Agenda amendments to the agenda, gentlemen. I have one, but I will defer to you two.
I don't have any.
We need to postpone the Rice Road name change item on the agenda under new business until November the 30th. And Ms. Brenda will put that on the agenda for us. She has indicated to me.
Until November 30th?
November 30th, yes. And that is the only agenda item change I had. So we'll move on to audience introductions.
Jack, you as for the Sentinel.
You. Christy Coleman, Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management.
Jackie Hobby of planning and zoning.
Terry Novellton, San Francisco Services, Portview.
Ed Lyons, Mount Bel Air Executive.
Don Hobby Finance and HR.
Welcome. It's not Neapolitan. It's not Neopolitan. It's Napolitan.
There's no E in it. It's got an AP.
Right, Napolitan. I've heard you called about every way you can.
And it's not Napoleon.
I should see the military when I was called.
Well, welcome.
By the Marines?
Marine Corps has a way of...
I like the ice cream name.
Yeah, nice to have you here. Welcome.
Neapolitan.
A motion to approve the minutes of October 31, November 1, November 2.
That's the move.
Oh, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of 10:31, 11:01, and 11:02. Discussion.
Looked pretty good.
Yeah, looked good.
Short and sweet, not unlike the time we take to get them generated.
I happen to know that our esteemed secretary came in on her day off to work on those said minutes, so thank you. You're welcome. Appreciate that. No glory when you come in on your day off because nobody knows about it.
Were you busy with something else or?
Nah.
Well, we didn't see her in the newspaper, so she did the election very well.
By the way, I do have a box of ballots in the back of my car.
Oh, we got another box.
Those are for... Just joking.
Those came from Broward.
Yeah, they're for 2020.
Early, early vote.
Thank you. I know you came in on Veterans Day to do those and I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Further discussion, hearing none. We'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approval of the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. The record shows the minutes were approved. October 31, November 1, November 2. Commissioner items. Commissioner Kanda, would you like to begin?
I have a couple of things. Strap plans in work. You all will be getting, soon as we get them out, the people that, you know, we've had a lot of people inputs sorting through the lists. We'll run that by you guys here as soon as we get them. The committee, there's two parts to that. There's the task force, which is the people that are going to be interviewed as well as work on the questionnaires at length. And then there's the committee guys, about nine is what we'll...
And you're talking about the strategic plan for economic development?
For economic development. The grant that we're working under with Cheryl Trent.
S-Brand?
S-Brand. And then the survey will be put out as soon as we can. And one thing that I'll have a letter on, we'll send a letter out saying here what's going to happen. It'll go in, it's a press release. And there are several ways for the people to interact. We're going to point out it's on websites, Facebook, blah, 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 and on hard copy. And we've got to figure out how to get that into the businesses and into the schools so that people that don't have the computers can have an input and we get a great cross-section of the county to respond. So, and that'll be out soon. So you'll see that as we go try to get that deadline for some of this. It's the first of November. We'd like to get of December, mid-December. We want to get the survey out or a little before to get it into schools, whatever. So that's, stay tuned for that. And the newspapers ought to be looking for the press release soon. On the airport, as you know, we're going to bid, we're going to reveal the bids. We had three contractors put in for the work to remove the berm at the airport. And the only urgency there was to get it done before the frost got too bad. And Otz Six Ranch would like to land as soon as possible, so that's why it's there. And I think according to the conference we had, we had a conference call yesterday, a bidder's conference. Make sure there was questions and answers to all the questions in common so every contractor had the same benefit of understanding what other questions might have been and understand the RFP.
We'll have that.
It was on a conference call.
Okay.
So they were all, and included the engineering team that built the RFP. And so we modified it accordingly and went forward. So we're anxious to see the results of that today. And then I had also talked with the CenturyLink team, Abel and Company, on the meeting we're going to have tomorrow. Going to have the Forest Service there and they're still up for supporting with dollars some kind of a fix. We're going to discuss different options at the meeting. And I did talk, as I mentioned before, with Dola. They'll be there. And they are options to do things like drag a line up art scramble, hang a line on art scramble, those kinds of things we need to talk with. And then finally, I've been getting a lot of calls because the season's going to be where you get a lot of trash. Presents are going to be open. Everybody's going to be throwing things out. We need to talk at some point probably about the hours at the landfill because a lot of people can't get out there during the open hours, especially on the weekends. So maybe that's something that would cost us some money. That's why we need to discuss what are some options to do a better job of doing better, keeping people that can get out there going. I'm not asking to do it now, but it's something we need to do.
Just to comment, go along with that. It's been discussed a couple of times because it's an ongoing issue.
Yeah, it is.
That's why the landfill is open on a Saturday and it closed on a Monday.
I understand, yeah.
So people could, you know, do that. I mean, I understand we're not going to discuss now, but it's been...
And then we got to do a better job of advertising. Like they took Saturday off, this Saturday, because they, there was, it was closed because of Veterans Day. So we just got to make sure we post things sooner and that kind of... Anyway, there's some issues there we can talk about at some point.
Well, and just a quick comment. I had a very irate citizen on you. She wasn't all that irate. Good point, though. Because of Veterans Day, then they were closed Tuesday, the following Tuesday after the Monday holiday, they're going to be closed. And so I don't think we've done a very good job of informing the community about that. I didn't have any idea they would be closed on Tuesday either. But, yeah, so...
And it's understandable that people take a Monday off and then it's a holiday and they have to take a day off.
So I think when, during our staff reports, we can maybe bring this up.
I think we probably ought to even discuss whether that's appropriate or not. I mean, if you have, you work for a company and your Monday is normally your Monday off, you don't get an extra day off just because the company's closed that day.
Well, interesting, interesting point.
And some companies don't observe all the government holidays. It depends on what the business they are.
I don't think they get a free day off just because they're normally closed on a holiday. This discussion, I think, was real. Want to make a decision upon?
Yeah, I had that discussion with my son-in-law who works the federal prison. His normal day off is Monday.
He didn't get an extra day?
He did get an extra day. He was off on Tuesday. I went, what? So, yeah, they gave him, his holiday was Tuesday and his day off was Monday, which I didn't realize that. I thought that was...
Now, you got to hint at it. The road and bridge boys were out on Monday.
Yeah.
And on Sunday. Road and Bridge Boys are out in the middle of the night.
And they were out at 4:00 in the morning.
Yes, no, those guys put their arrows in. I'm not issue with them.
Yeah, I think it's a conversation we maybe start with Rusty and their staff report.
Let me think about it. Staff reports got a little less coming out.
Good.
Okay, that's all I got for now.
Excellent. I've got a couple items before I get into my calendar, or I guess one item. And that is the underfunded courthouse grant hearing on November the 30th in Denver. We've requested a couple of time slots. Amanda Hunter, Judge Hunter, Lisa Rowe, and Anne Barthrop have offered to go to that hearing and represent Custer County. I think it would be in our best interest to also have a commissioner there so it's, because it actually is a county commissioner presentation.
I was planning on attending.
I could be there because I'm going to be coming back from Alaska. Two days, I'm going to stay up there and just attend the meeting. Return. It's an option.
Have a wonderful trip.
Here's what I was going to say.
It's kind of like the broadband thing where all the commissioners went. And understanding you couldn't make it, but I would suggest that both you and I go, Tom, just as a support to show them how serious we are and how much we really care about this.
I agree there, too.
Yeah, now, so here's my concern. Obviously, that's county commissioner.
Wins our meeting at the county commissioners.
BOCC that day. Alls we needed to, oh, that's right, it is the BOCC day.
So we could maybe...
You can all call in.
Change that date for commissioner meeting.
Well, but we've got checks, vouchers.
The date part is of no consequence to me, but it has to be payday. But that doesn't mean I can't date the checks as such for payday because we're only paid 12 times a year.
Could we meet the day before commissioner meeting?
It's up to us.
Yeah, it's not my call on that.
As far as you're concerned, could we? Would it create you a lot of hardship? It's not going to wreck your world.
So that I could run those checks and do the other part.
Ms. Brenda, you have comments about that? We had not talked about this, so I just...
I don't have any problem with it as long as Donna's okay with it.
Yeah, as long as I have time. If the attorney was here, he could say that we had to, do they have to call in and say, I approve being a pay? Because I don't know the legalities and the commissioner's side of that part. I'm sure there's a way because there's got to be with all the counties that that happens a lot.
Which year, '29?
So I, I just don't know what they do.
But that happened one other time.
I'm coming back from Alaska, so I don't want to drive down here, drive back, but I'll stay there.
Or something. And so, you know, even if they just called into Kelly and said, yeah, and I'm going to go.
Probably you have to go to the, what, 3rd? Yeah, I don't want to do that. So I would say let's do it the day before.
Yeah, because we're going to run into three back-to-back meetings.
We'll have to notify that the staff meetings will be that day also.
Yeah, our agenda at this point is not extremely heavy on 30th.
I, I think that makes the most...
I move, we move the meeting to the Thursday before, whichever day that is.
Well done, and I'll second it.
Okay.
And I'm going to call in.
You're good.
Yeah, as long as you didn't tell me the date before.
Right.
Because that would be a little scary, but...
We moved and seconded to move our November 30th meeting, BOCC meeting, back to November 29 at 9:00 in the morning discussion. As Commissioner Kanda indicated, he will not be here, but he can phone in. And I'm good with that. We need to try our new...
I'd like to try it out here.
Conference call center anyway, so...
I think it's great. The other comment I would have is we also have staff meetings that day. So let's move that also.
Yes, I agree. Move the staff meetings back to the 29th as part of the... And as we had discussed previously, speaking of staff meeting, we'd said that it would not be part of the formal commissioner meeting from now on, that it would be a separate thing in the afternoon, correct? And a commissioner or multi-commissioners could attend that, should attend that.
I think that's fine. We do need to post it, though, so that, A, the public can be there if they need to. And if, just in case, you know, I like to attend that, so...
Just in case we flop off.
Right. Are you talking about the staff meeting? Now, I was understanding the staff meeting is not open to the public. That's why we moved it to the afternoon.
That's why you moved it to the staff.
And that was why you decided only one commissioner would go.
That's right.
Because, because the staff felt icky about having the public there and me there.
I think that's right.
So Commissioner Kanda will go on.
I guess that makes sense.
Yeah, that was the whole discussion.
Makes sense, so you're free to speak your mind without having to worry about a camera. I guess that makes sense, so maybe we could just rotate.
One of us can rotate.
Do that, if you want to go to this one and the next one, you and one of the two of us will go just so we're there to answer questions, observe, and give encouragement.
Take issues to the board.
Right. Yeah, be a liaison to the board. So I can certainly do that on the 29th or Commissioner Kanda's going to be gone.
Why don't you do that and I'll keep down.
We'll just get on the rotating schedule.
What time is that just out of here?
1:00.
You just wanted to be careful.
Now, that makes sense. I forgot.
Yeah.
Ms. Boobis, thank you for inviting me.
Be careful about...
Oh, I'm just kidding. Jackie Hobby may be here with her fishing lure and you'll be alone. We won't be able to help you.
I love her necklace. I don't know where you get off on this fishing lure thing, but...
Those comments before taping?
That's exactly right.
That's exactly right.
Got to stand tall.
That's right. I'll roll over in a heartbeat. Love your necklace. Looks very nice. Had to look at the camera when I said that. So I agree completely, gentlemen. I think as, as we did, all three of us went to the broadband hearing in Denver. I think that we'd be well advised for all, all three of us to attend that.
Yeah, they've been real good supporting us so far.
No, not yet. We're still in the debate. So, and I can tell you that this, this hearing is in the Judicial Center just south, across the street, no, on the north side of the Capitol Building. And the parking is a nightmare.
Horrendous.
We don't know what time that's going to be. It's kind of like that hearing in Denver we went to for broadband. We've requested some later time slots. So I think we'll just have to wait and decide if we go the night before, if we go up that morning.
That's what time it is.
I went to the, I knew I'd forget the name of this, our Technology SIPA presentation up there, and I'm telling you, I'll bet I walked 12 blocks. I mean, the parking is horrendous.
There's parking. I went to the PUC hearing and then underneath the building. If you get there early, it's...
We booked the county plane to take us out.
Yeah, we're going to get that done.
So I don't know. We can work on that. Could we be there if we go up the day of?
That's why we're all over. We'll work on it. We'll find out what time it is.
I would sit here.
I don't, of course, Ann would go from here. I don't know about Lisa and Amanda. They would probably leave from home to go, so... But if we can carpool.
Oh, there's Clint.
You can start now.
Yeah, we've just been casually...
We have trouble with your tie today?
We've been casually visiting for 22 minutes.
Well, I'm happy to report everything's fine at the Wetmore Community Center.
Well, you knew that.
You made a quick trip back, Clint.
Yeah, I did.
Oh, my gosh.
Were you lonely?
I don't know.
Did you have coffee with the boys or not?
Yeah, I stopped down there for a while. Got all the chairs set up and everything before I realized, hey, I'm the only one here.
Somebody's always the last to find out. It's okay.
You're not angry, are you?
What?
You're not angry about it?
No, I'm angry for being stupid. I'd be angry my whole life.
Counselor, my apologies. Would you care to compliment Ms. Jackie on her lovely necklace today?
Well, that is a lovely necklace. Did you pick that up at the last home visit you did, the one we talked about last?
That's worse than... I'm glad you said that because...
You just bailed Tom out.
I call it a fishing lure and I believe you've upped me on that.
Ooh, that was wild.
That was wild. Welcome, Counselor. Nice to have you here this morning.
I think our counselor has anger issues.
Yeah, he might. So we're still in the period of discussion on our motion to actually change, no.
Yes. Did we vote?
No.
To postpone it. So because of this item of that hearing, so... Any other pertinent discussion about changing the date?
Tell it to Clint. Clint, move the meeting.
Oh, yeah, let's get this to Counselor. Changing another meeting.
Okay, I'll be the last to know.
You are, aren't you?
Because everybody in the room now knows except you. So, yeah, good point. Thank you. That's great. November 30th meeting, we are in discussion of voting on moving that back to the 29th because we need to be representing our county of Denver at a underfunded courthouse grant hearing on the 30th.
Okay.
That would be in your courthouse in West Cliff.
I'll check out Wetmore on my way here.
I mean, you're lucky to be there just in case we change it, but 205 South...
You're going to have to blitz fast.
Further discussion, hearing none. We'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. We will have our end of the month, November meeting on November the 29th. That's no heartburn for you?
No, just if, when you make the announcement to pay the bills, that it just says November 30th.
Oh, okay.
That they won't be dated the day that you say.
We'll do it.
They don't get paid the day on?
I know, no. Good God.
We get paid 12 times a year. Doesn't matter what day, does it? I mean, I'm fine with the...
If you're an hourly, if you're an hourly person, you could say that I did not pay you for that last day.
That's true.
So, no, not a court.
Way to go, you brother.
Yeah.
Very good. Commissioner Prince, item, sir.
Yeah, I would like to first congratulate Commissioner Kanda on his hard fought, overwhelming victory to be reelected and rest of the... Yeah, congratulations and look forward to working with you again.
Well, may I interject? He turned in his phone. He turned in his computer. He turned in his mouse and he gave up all of his passwords.
Now I get, now I get to get them reissued.
I don't know what that means. So was there...
Burman's fixing it for you.
Maybe he's nervous after elections, is what I'm thinking.
Burman's fixing it.
I just had to pick on you.
Congratulations on your landslide victory. You know, it's been a little over a week since last meeting. I really haven't been all that active. I met with tourism twice, once individually with a member who really just wanted to get a better feeling of what's going on. And I met with them again last night. Unfortunately, I had an issue and I needed to leave a little early, but they promised me they would all be good little boys and girls. I believe they were. Not that I mean that in any negative way, which is my, be nice to each other. I attended the recycling meeting, worked with Joni Liebman, and it's not Lee Burman. Someone called her that yesterday. She challenged that. Joni Liebman on the grant that she put in that was very favorably approved. I stopped in at the early childhood development meeting. I did not stay for very long. That was last week. That seemed to be going good. Just changing the subject, I have not heard anything from the housing study we funded that is supposed to be completed first quarter, actually in January of 2019. We're supposed to have input into it, and I was just curious if either of you gentlemen have heard anything. If not, I'm going to go ahead and I'll follow up with...
That's great.
...on that. Get a report the next time. Okay, other than that, you know, handle the same kind of things, you know? Snowplow piled up, you know, the side on people's driveways, you know, those kind of things. I tell them, get over it nicely.
You mean get over it as in drive over it?
Get over the, yeah.
Thought that's what you did.
Road and Bridge did a lot of the job. Of course, we all attended the Veterans Day dinner, which I thought was...
Oh, yeah, that was a very nice deal.
That was a great dinner and some of us were very spiffing our outfits and our uniforms from back in the day. Some of us didn't fit into them anymore, so they just wore suits. But it was a very good dinner. That's what I meant to.
Good, thank you. I was remiss. I said I wanted to go over a couple of things before I went through my calendar and then I forgot to go through my calendar. So I'll do that real quick if you don't mind. Let's see, I did go out and attended the airport board meeting with CDOT and Armstrong when they came down. Commissioner Kanda, of course, was there. But I sat in on that. Was informative and encouraging. So those people are on top of it. CDOT is obviously very supportive of our airport down there and have been over the last 25 years. So that was nice. On November the 7th, I communicated with our newly hired county extension agent via email. Young lady coming out of Creed and so offered my assistance to help with housing or whatever she needed to make that transition starting January 2nd.
That's what it was. What was this person's name?
This person's name is Guinevere Nelson.
Very sharp. I enjoyed the interviews and good, good choice.
Yeah.
Will she be moving?
I believe so, yes. That is her plan. I think I have found her place to rent.
Because that was a major issue with the young lady that left housing.
Yeah, no, she is definitely planning on living in the county. We'll find her place there.
Can you spell her name for me?
Uh, yes, that would be G-U-I-N-E-V-E-R-E. Guinevere Nelson.
No W?
G-U-I-N.
The Hamo spelling major.
Oh, that's right, yeah. Of all people, the question is, Guinevere Nelson. Yeah, and Commissioner Kanda was able to sit in on that interview as he indicated. And she mentioned during that interview that she has been the executive director of a nonprofit in Creed that deals with mining reclamation for the last nine years. So she's ready for a change and I was excited about that tenure on a job that...
We're not changing jobs every other day. I get it.
That's what we're after. So, I'm excited about it. I think she'll do a good job, and it'd be nice to get her on board and up and running again, so...
Timeline, we don't know for sure yet.
Pardon?
Timeline.
Uh, no, January 2nd is her start date.
She's gonna start on the 2nd.
Will you guys be doing a press release, or will CSU?
Uh, that's a good question.
Probably us.
I would guess probably us. I can pursue that at CSU and see.
They could furnish us with some stuff, though.
Yeah. Good point. Let me make a note of that real quick, so I don't forget. And then, November the 8th, I attended the Upper Arkansas Water Conservation District meeting in Salida, and I also sat in on the Custer County Kids Council meeting on their and their monthly meeting, social and emotional wellness down at the library. Did you come into that?
I was in that just for a little while.
Okay, I was upfront. I didn't see you, so, cool. Had a good turnout, and I think people are interested and committed to that whole concept.
Very well attended.
Let me just make a note here real quick. And then Saturday, the 10th, I attended the Custer County Conservation District's annual meeting at the multipurpose room in the school. They had two speakers there. One gentleman was a former state climatologist, a very interesting presentation, and the second speaker was a water court judge from Denver, so he had a very interesting historical perspective, went back to 1865 and started in on kind of the historical progression. Yeah, so, actually, 1867 was the first recorded right in San Luis Valley, and they actually had a picture, they had a little slideshow, they had a picture of that ditch that's still running, and so I thought that was pretty, pretty interesting, 150 years ago, 251 years ago. So, a lot of history there, but they had a good turnout, and Bob Miller's the president of that conservation district, and he did a good job chairing that, and so it was very, very informative. And then, of course, I believe that the American Legion was appreciative of the fact that all three commissioners were at their Veterans Day Dinner. Thank you, gentlemen, for attending that. I thought they had a great program and a good speaker. And then last night, I went to a school board meeting, and Commissioner Kanda was recognized for his volunteerism on making the new scoreboard happen, basically. So, I'm assuming you're the one that initially approached about Six Ranch and Assin.
And Trinity helped an awful lot as well.
Yeah, yeah. Had a lot of recognition at the school board meeting last night for the volunteers, but you were really the keystone deal on getting that whole thing started.
Coordinated and got the engineering done.
Good. Very good. So, I appreciate that. Thank you. So, that's, that's the end of my report, and I apologize for not including that when I first started. Anything else, gentlemen, under Commissioner items? Attorney items, sorry. Oh, yeah.
I am here.
You are here.
Kit Shai was here at, I think, our first meeting of the month and made a request. He needed, he was here as the fire chief requesting that we assist the Wet Mountain Fire Protection District. They're acquiring an easement on a piece of land to put in an underground cistern. I got that easement prepared and sent it to Kit, and he was satisfied with it, and he was presenting it to the Fire District Board last night for their approval. He's already presented it to the woman who's gonna grant the easement, and the idea is initially, they're gonna put in a 5,000 gallon cistern underground, but he says the piece of property that they're getting the easement on is big enough they could put other cisterns on, perhaps up to 60,000 gallons of water there. So, it's, I think it'll be very helpful for the Fire Protection District to have a source of water that close instead of having to travel many miles to fill their trucks. Along with that, he was asking if you would consider an ordinance, make it unlawful for anybody to tamper or damage, deface property. They're gonna have this cistern there. It is gonna have a security fence around it, and there'll be signs on it, but I've been working on a proposed ordinance that I'll present to you and see if it's something that you think would be worthwhile, not just for the Fire Protection District, but for all county property.
That's gonna be my question.
Yeah, and let's see, I met with Jackie last week. We talked several times about the cease and desist orders that you approved a couple of weeks ago, and she's had some progress, and I say, are you gonna be talking about this?
I'm gonna talk about that in a few minutes, aren't you?
No.
You're on the agenda.
Actually, I'm on the agenda for an HPE, but I will be leaving again to go out to the cease and desist.
Okay, that one that you and I talked about last week?
Oh.
Okay. Anyway, she's pretty much knee deep in some issues. Literally.
When you say knee deep, you're not kidding.
Yeah, but the point is that we are in progress on a specific cease and desist that we discussed at our last meeting.
Correct. I met with Vernon yesterday. He had an issue about an open records request that he had received, and so I discussed that with him, and then I've also talked to Shannon about some issues. That's just the usual thing. I get inquiries about various, you know, matters, and I provide that sort of assistance. Had an email from you yesterday, Tom, talking about, there's, and I think it's on the agenda, the opening, the sealed bids for the sale of some property, and if that does happen, and I think I'll wait until we do that to talk to you about what our options are there, but I can certainly handle the legal end of it, of course.
Perfect.
That's all I had to report on.
Okay, thank you. Questions for the council?
Nope.
Good. Administrative assistant items?
I have nothing today.
Okay. Public comment? Yes, ma'am?
I have a question. I'm a little confused about the relationship between the attainable housing committee and the county. They came to you and got your approval on their board, sort of like Tourism and some of the other boards. Are they an official board of the county then?
Yes. Bylaws have been adopted, and the members have been approved, and I think by, I don't know what the word is, but my thinking is if we approve an organization's bylaws as a county entity, then we're really adopting them as a county entity.
And we also approve their membership, so I...
Right.
Same thing as the others.
Right.
And the budget to work on.
My perspective is certainly they're a county entity.
So, from now on in January, you'll be doing that whole thing?
Review their board as well.
With the board, and will they have, they'll have their own budget?
Uh, yes, eventually they will. They did not technically this year go in through the budget hearings because they weren't in existence.
We anticipate next year that'll be part of the budget process.
Okay. Is that fair, Ms. Dawn?
I was gone, changing my signs so people could get their bids over here since I'm sitting here and they're dropping.
Yeah, I think next year they will probably submit a bid just like...
No, I didn't have it out. I thought my schedule was nine, so I didn't know. Well, he's here, I think, for this.
Yeah.
So, I'm sure people weren't wondering, because zones locked and mines locked, so they wouldn't be standing out in the sidewalk going, hello?
Yeah, one of the, I guess, unusual circumstances is that board has also created a position of ex officio for Autumn Devers, and actually does have voting rights on that board if...
Only a tiebreaker.
If a vote ends in a tie, then she has the ability to vote. It's unusual, but...
Is this not just a name change from affordable housing to attainable housing?
Right, but there was never a formal entity.
But we've always assigned board members for affordable housing every year, so instead of affordable housing, it's now attainable housing, correct?
Right.
And they need to follow the same procedure, putting in their names. They want to be out in that kind of broader scope.
But they never had a set of bylaws, and they just would kind of formalize that whole thing.
Is it officially a board now or a committee? Because I thought it would call themselves a committee before.
Actually, it's attainable housing.
Committee.
Because we had discussed that...
Maybe that's, that's a great question.
I thought it was board. Actually, let me see. Of course, now when I'm in a hurry, I won't be able to find it, but...
You're perfectly taken.
Well, we had discussed that if it was a permanent entity, as opposed to just a temporary thing to look into at a particular issue, it should be a board.
Or it should be a board.
I believe it, I believe I agree with you there. I thought, and I'm just struggling finding that.
No, we just call it's on the, it was on the 31st, Tom.
I thought it was on the 2nd.
31st is when it was on the agenda, attainable housing bylaw. Of October.
I think it depends on what your documents say, right?
That's correct.
But that can be correct.
I don't see it in the minutes on the 31st.
I thought it was on the...
It was on the agenda in the last...
Well, we changed it to November 2nd. It was on the 31st, and we moved it to November 2nd, so let me look that up real quick. That's a great question, Counselor. Thank you.
It says committee on their bylaws.
Okay.
Probably right.
I'll research that a little bit. Yeah, it does, attainable.
I was thinking that's what you...
It was called a committee, but I think...
I thought it was, the intent was that it was going to be a board.
I think it needs to be a board. We're approving members.
So, I'll do a little research on that, and then we'll get back with them. We may have to change that.
Right.
Do you have a copy of the bylaws, Brenda?
Yeah.
I can't, I just can't lay my hands on my copy right now.
You go to your board packet the 2nd.
Oh, okay, I was just there. Didn't realize that. Oh, the board packet on the 2nd? Sorry. Let me look. Okay, we'll have a committee. Yeah, I think, Ms. Brenda, could you put that on the agenda for the 29th?
Yes.
Thank you, and we will...
I'll ask one of their representatives.
You're right, that's what I was saying. We'll invite those to the meeting and have a discussion with them. I'll actually alert them ahead of time. Reasonable. Commissioner Kanda?
I'll make it officially a board somewhere.
Okay. Great question, though. Thank you. Other comment from the public?
Can I comment if I'm not public?
Hmm?
I, you know, we talked about the Christmas party. Do you wanna add that on the...
Oh.
What do you wanna do there?
You can, probably oughta talk about it.
Yeah, there's been some individuals come to me and just, in conversation, basically, wondered if the county building, the courthouse building here, Christmas party, if we wanted to do it. Typically, it's from noon to 2:00, and we would have that here as kind of a potluck dinner.
On what days?
Uh, hadn't been a date.
About this side again.
Yeah, hadn't been a date dinner.
In the past, we actually closed the courthouse for those hours.
Right, and there was some discussion about going off campus and having that Christmas party somewhere else at a food venue. I didn't have a feeling really one way or the other. The thinking behind that was that it prevents, or it allows more time socially, and people aren't having to prepare food, bring food, set up, decorate, clean up, wash the dishes, and go back to work.
So, the only place I could really think of that would be like Tony's or Icy's, because it's large enough to handle it, and then would that, would the county then pay for a fake?
There's a great question. There is this standing question of is, what role does the county have or should have in helping defray the cost of these Christmas parties? Roden Bridge, of course, has the advantage where they collect their scrap steel all year, and that goes towards paying for a portion of their Christmas party. The Sheriff's Department's Christmas party's paid through his budget, which indirectly means the county pays that, and the courthouse, that has not been happening, so there is a question about, hey, would the county help pay for our Christmas party as well?
Well, I personally think there isn't anything wrong with having an office party in the office. That's what, that's kind of a tradition all across America, and I'm afraid we lose some people going out to dinner.
Well, we're not talking dinner.
I know, we're talking lunch or whatever it is.
12 to 2, the same hours, yeah. There is a discussion about should it be 12 to 2, or should it be in the evening, and I think that's an internal decision.
I fully respect what you're saying, but I kind of like the idea of going to an off-site because we don't have a big enough room for all of our 80 employees to get, 80-plus employees to get together where they can just chit chat and Merry Christmas, and if they're in a large venue like Tony's anteroom, more people could, you know, you'd be able to interact socially better, so I kind of like the idea of going off campus. And I personally have a problem if the county, you know, if we set up, I mean, it's not a budgetary item, but if we use some of our discretionary money for paying up to X amount of dollars, and I don't know what's reasonable, but a reasonable amount, I mean...
Take donations.
I don't have a problem with that.
Well, a couple things. I want to respond to your comments that, we're not talking about a county-wide Christmas party because Roden Bridge has their own, Sheriff's Department has their own, so really only talk about, and that's what I want to ask you. That's correct. So, we might be 80 people, but not 80 employees. Correct. Okay. A question I had for Ms. Cindy real quick, and somebody asked me that. Maybe you and I had this conversation yesterday. Are you guys included in the sheriff's office Christmas party, search and rescue?
Oh, search and rescue does their own banquet, and it's sort of an awards banquet, and we invite usually Jeff, VA, and somebody from the sheriff's department. I think Shannon and Chris and Jeff were coming this year, and then we do our own fundraising and stuff, so no candy funds.
Is it a Christmas party or just your end of the year awards banquet?
It's now, we do it up at the Alpine, so it's actually November 30, and that's the week. This is Custer County Search and Rescue, so, and then...
And when I first said, do you guys, are you part of that, you started to nod yes. You must have thought I was asking about EMS?
EMS, I think, does a potluck. CES and OEM typically don't do anything. We, you know, I usually don't even know when the Christmas party is over here unless I happen to walk in, so I don't, you know, do the gift exchange, but a lot of that's because, you know, there may be a meeting on the calendar or something where I just can't make it, so...
Yeah, I think the idea here, correct me if I'm wrong, you would know, even Donna and Brenda would know better than I, that this, we were talking about a building Christmas party for the employees in this building.
Right.
Now, can that, should that be inclusive of other people? I don't know that. I wouldn't think...
We invite the health department.
I was gonna say the health department and the health department.
Tim. Oh, with the...
Yeah, from Alyssa, or it was Donald, Donald, or Gail.
Yeah, okay.
Tim, sure.
Because I, I don't think the intent was to invite the airport board, you know, start inviting all these other boards. Just don't work.
And I think Posse does theirs with the sheriff's department now. I think it used to be two separate dinners, but I think Shannon's got that as a...
So, what do we want to do? Do we want to decide something today, or are we gonna wait?
Uh, we probably oughta have...
What do we want to do?
Here's the problem. If we don't, if we don't, yeah, because there's Christmas parties early for December 5th. I'm already committed to, so I think indirectly the county pays for the sheriff's department's Christmas party because it's in his budget.
Right.
I believe, based on our discussions last year with Roden Bridge, they're pretty comfortable with where they're at because they have their salvage scrap steel money, but that leaves the courthouse.
I don't have a problem helping that out at all, if we decide to go to Tony's. I think we oughta let the, you've all, you've been doing it, what do you want?
Well, this year it is clerk and recorder's office.
Yeah, I know.
And we took a poll yesterday.
Oh, did you?
And the majority want to keep it during the day instead of at night, and they would like to do, they would like to leave.
Go off.
So that, and the reason why is it, it takes a lot of time for us to put that together, and we're so busy anymore, and we don't have time to work together.
And you have the cleanup to worry about, and you want it offsite.
So, a two-hour thing, you're really looking maybe an hour and 15 minutes.
Do we have to vote on this, or can we just decide?
Well, I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna fund part of it, we need to vote on that.
Yeah, I agree.
So...
Okay, I move we have a Christmas party and we'll sponsor it.
To what degree?
To help buy some of the pizza, and I don't know if we want to do it all, or are we gonna...
So that we can discuss.
Yeah, let's, let's get a discussion.
The movement seconded that the county helped defray the cost of the courthouse building Christmas party discussion.
If we could get an idea of approximately how many people we're talking about, would a bud, I don't want to use the word budget, but would our allocation be maybe $10 or $15 per person, something like that, no greater than?
What I'd rather do, Ms. Cindy, is let's let Kelly get somebody together. We're gonna do it, and now we need to go understand how many, and we need to understand what it's gonna cost.
You're absolutely right.
So, let's let them come back.
Come back.
Let's just go ahead, and we'll, and then we can figure out how, what proportion we can do, and they'll work the difference.
Sure, sure. So, yesterday, when we were talking about this, some of the people said, well, if we do it like that, can we bring our spouse if they can come? And we said, yeah, that was fine, and they said, we don't have a problem paying a portion of it, so what if you came up with a lump sum and said, this is what we're gonna give toward it, whatever you go above and beyond, you divide that between all your employees.
That's what I was thinking. If we had, if we're talking 50 employees, I'm just making a number, and we agreed at $10 apiece, or $15 apiece, that's what we'd allocate, and then if you want to bring spouses or whatever, you would just pay.
So, I, let's, I move we do it. I'll amend that to say, to include a $500 up to, not to say 500 bucks to get you the 40 people.
Is that sufficient money to, I mean, I don't want to...
To supplement. They're gonna have to pony in.
Yeah, I know, but if they brought their own dishes, it's not much coming out of your own pocket. I don't want to burden our employees by going, look, we have a great Christmas party, makes you have to kick in $20 a person to supplement what we don't pay. I'd like to make sure we...
That's why I wanted her to tell us what, if they pick a number, they get a price from Tony's.
We're in public comment, so I'll allow. Did you have a question?
No, I just, I think that if you plan a...
No, I just, I think that if you plan a, if you do one of their buffets, you can probably do it for that much money, and nobody else.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
That's what I was thinking too, I mean. They go a long ways on those, except for the drinks, buy your own drinks. I mean, the soda pops.
Let me say too that, for the record, Roden Bridge having their Christmas party at a restaurant, they are asking each employee to pay ten dollars, and they're making up the difference. I don't know what the price is, but.
You know what, that's the answer. How about we have every, every person who comes pay a ten dollar fee, and we'll make up the difference? Does that sound reasonable? So, if you bring a spouse, it'd be twenty dollars, you come yourself, it'd be ten, and.
I would defer, what do you ladies think?
Not a good plan.
My, my vote was whatever brought the most people together for the Christmas party, because that's what Christmas is, is family. So, not to segregate or not to have it be different. And if nobody could make it after hours and hours, I think that everybody needs to be together for it.
Where's Roden Bridge going, the Alpine?
Alpine.
So, it's more.
That's why it was more expensive this year.
Yeah, the pizza thing, if we had five bucks a head and want them to come, we can supplement the difference.
Five dollars a head, five dollars a head, and we'll sup, we'll pay the balance. And Kelly, you know, whoever.
Thousands too.
Yes, thousands too.
Yeah.
And whoever organized it with Tony's, don't get the lost, or you know what I mean? Make it reasonable, and I think that's perfectly fine. This is what we do, we are a family.
By consent, then, can we consider his motion amended? Further discussion? The movement seconded then that the county helped defray the cost of the courthouse Christmas party by paying the balance of the expense of that after each guest is paid five dollars. Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay?
So, do you wanna do, what about a date?
Uh, I'd say that's up to you guys.
You guys decide, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I hate to interrupt, and this is off the Christmas party.
Good, cause that's done.
I have, um, people right now waiting for me. I'm explaining it to them, I have no choice, but I have to leave.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
You have to leave right now, or do you wanna do your presentation?
No, I have to leave right now.
Good, we're good.
Be able to come back, who you going, who you going out?
No, I have the two boys here.
Those are gentlemen, they're not boys.
Have the two gentlemen here. You have a list of the conditions.
So, you wanna leave it on the agenda?
Please.
Okay.
And will you, it's, I need the county commissioners to approve. The planning commission has voted to move forward to approval of San Isabel propane being on ads. I got you a list of conditions in your packet, and I need you to look over the conditions and either change them, or add to them, and approve them, and then come back to me.
So, what is your recommendation?
Our recommendation is to approve it.
And is there a signed document other than the letter, cover letter? You want that signed today if we vote to do that?
I'll have to do it on letterhead and stuff, I just didn't wanna be missed.
And so, we're really just looking at the thirteen conditions, is that correct?
Yes, you need to add, or you don't like verbiage.
One quick question, when we're talking about offset fifty feet, is that from the center of the road? Is that from county property?
Property line.
From property line.
And if it's interior property, then that fifty-seven feet from the tank to the, we're okay there?
Yes.
Those were my point of questions.
The setbacks are all correct and stuff, and included is a new map that.
You got a copy of the new map? Okay, yeah, it was the fifty-seven feet to the drive that was my big concern.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Yep, no problem, we'll leave it on the agenda.
Sorry, thank you, guys.
Yep, um, so, further public comment, all right. Hearing none, we will move to staff report. Ms. Donna, supplemental budgets, more than one?
Six.
Six? Not a lot of paperwork for six supplemental budgets.
Well, one sheet of paper.
She's quick and easy, she doesn't.
Yeah, we're gonna look at a document today that has five signature pages in it, so apparently that's not the case here.
Up kinda.
Oh.
Four.
Oh.
Four per each, so, yeah, so that's, yeah. Before I get to the supplemental budgets, I would like to, since we were on the Christmas, talk about dedicated service awards, the Christmas bonuses. Um, usually it goes on the November paycheck. It's every employee, non-elected officials. It's anyone with six months or more is a hundred and twenty. Three months to five months is sixty. Two months or less, thirty, and part-time employees that are the, you know, full-time, part-time, sixty.
The last one again, part-time?
Part-time, like Carmeline, who's a part-time person forever on there.
Part-time.
Full-time, part-time, I know, that's why I said that, I guess it doesn't sound good. Um, the caveat to that is that you can only do that if you have saved enough money to pay those out of your, your regular dollars. Quite frankly, I never get it because each budget line, if, if Mr. Hyde had, you know, twelve employees, and it was, you know, times ten, that he had that, and then he would do that.
And if he didn't?
Um, then he would have to deduct, to decide.
Decide how.
Decide what?
Yeah, if it would be less or nonexistent on there. I don't get one because I never have any money in my budget, and I can't afford it.
So, that's by department?
Yes.
By the fund lines, I think.
Mm-hmm, by, yep.
We've done this each year, have we not?
Since twelve twenty-nine of ninety-five.
We did it last year.
I looked that number up so I could get answered that question. I knew somebody would ask that question, 'cause I'm going a long time, but I don't really know how long.
So, do we have a general idea of what the total figure would be?
Well, there's probably seventy-two, I, I don't, right off the top, because it would be Kelly, if she had five full-time people, she would know that it was.
But it is by department.
Yes, that it's, it's.
It's by the balances left over, that's, it's not like we're cutting into a fund.
Well, that, I guess that's one of my real questions.
Twenty thousand dollars, and then that's real.
We don't have, like, we have to find money for the Christmas party. This, we do not have to find money for.
Right.
This is, if you have money, you can use it.
I believe that when people do their budgets, they pad about five hundred dollars, or, or what have you, to make that happen.
Or they are efficient, and they save some money, and that's okay.
And, and would have more.
Well, just to put it on the table, I'll go ahead and move that we approve, um, the bonuses based upon the tradition that we've done since ninety-five, can you say? Ninety-five, with each department funding it through excess funds that each department has, based upon the numbers that you just mentioned.
The movement seconded to approve the dedicated service bonuses for the county employees, further discussion? I may be ignorant, I was writing as you were speaking, and I lost a little bit of the part-time thing. Can we go back to that?
Um, we have, we have probably four or five employees that are just part-time employees, but there are part-time employees all the time, full-time, and so they just get sixty. They don't, they do qualify, but not for the full, but not for, you know, because they, in, in theory, they could go to one-twenty because they're there, or it could go to the third, but they chose the midstream, the half.
I just wanna make sure that my, my motion says not to exceed the numbers you talked about. I'll just have this wild thought, someone may have excess money in their budget and go, well, I think I'm gonna give twice that amount to the employees' budget.
No, I would eliminate it to the.
We need the mechanism, which is.
Maximum one-twenty, sixty, thirty, and sixty.
Right, exactly, okay, I just wanna make sure we work.
Good point.
Tradition.
Yeah. I guess, my point, maybe I won't make it very well, is that department heads assume this is going to happen. If there is not excess funds, then do they say, well, I'm just gonna take some money out of my paper budget, I'm gonna take some money out of this budget, that budget, I don't know how that happens, as department heads go.
I wouldn't assume to think for them.
No.
How's that? I mean, I don't know.
You know, we say, well, if it's excess funds, you can do it.
That's what we've said.
As a department head, I say, well, I've got excess funds, but I've only got enough to do a third of those amounts. I'm gonna find that money somewhere else, so I don't.
Or they could redistribute it differently, they don't have to give them sixty bucks, they can give them twenty.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
It's a redistribution.
And, and I have to pick only these four because it is a huge setup to do this. So, these, these are.
Top's point is that they may cut into some other budgetary numbers that they actually will need before the end of the year to supplement the bonuses, that.
They could do that.
And that's a, that's a very valid.
Philosophically, I would be opposed to that. I don't, I don't have a problem with dedicated service bonuses if it's handled properly, and that, again, we have to put our faith in our department heads to deal with that. I'm not sure about our process being great, maybe we should have a dedicated service budget line in each department.
Well, and, and we've thought about that, I can't put it in payroll itself, but, you know, maybe in twenty-twenty, we could drop where the longevity and the overtime and the SRO money that we could put, you know, like the seven hundred dollars in there for that, but it cannot be added to, in the payroll line.
Can I suggest, because I think this is an excellent point. I think what we probably oughta do, and it'll be your decision whether you wanna approve it this year or not, but next year's budget, the two, twenty-twenty budget, 'cause we approved it twenty-nineteen, I think we oughta have a line item called budgets, and we can determine with the county budget whether we will have sufficient money for Christmas bonuses or not, and it'll be part of our budgetary discussion. That way, we don't have the concerns about, well, are we gonna take it out of new tires for whatever, that we really need the tires, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna cheat my employees, so. I like it, I like it as a budget.
Now, you said a line item as budget, you mean a line item as bonus. You said the word budgets.
In the budget, I meant in the budget, a line item for bonuses for Christmas, whatever name you wanna give it.
I certainly think dedicated service or whatever, I think that's reasonable, and then each department could budget that.
Right, and then we can, we can determine whether we're going to give this.
I, uh, I hear you, it's an idea, but in my view, bonus, you know, and I've seen it in companies, military, and government. It's an incentive to do better, and it's also, you have to have faith in your leadership. And if you, if somebody's gonna game it to that degree, that's nitpicking it. I've seen hard times where nobody got a bonus, period, because it really, we had some emergencies come up, and nobody tried to game it during the year, saying, well, I gotta give Joe a, you know, they know it, and they take it together, and you're a team.
That's exactly why I feel it should be a budgeted item, because what I'm really concerned about is, is unfair discrimination because one, one, or one department was more frugal and thought about it, and there, or they didn't think about it ahead of time when they made their budget, and their employees are gonna be harmed because they didn't consider this at the time they did their budget as a county budget. It'd go across the board, and I really like the idea of going across the board as opposed to merit in terms of, well, Joe did a great job, and Sally didn't do it, so I wanna give more to Joe. That is, that is a disaster waiting to happen. My feeling is, a few extra dollars in our employees' pockets to help defray similar costs of Christmas makes sense.
But, um, if you screw up, you shouldn't be, you shouldn't get a bonus, period.
I get it, and why don't we call a Christmas present?
We could do that, but we can discuss that when we do it. I think the issue on the table right now is.
This year.
I think this year, and I'm all, I think we've got a tradition, we've done it, and we're gonna trust the department heads to, well, you know, they don't have much time to game it from here on out to the end of the year anyway.
Well, and a side note, that I would hate to have the Christmas bonuses be used as leverage at bonus time where at budget time. You know, it's only a one percent, so then we're removing that, and so that's the only reason that we have never put it there, because that would be a leverage. We're only, we're doing no percent and no bonuses, gosh, man, it's January first, and we already are like, bleh. And so, yeah, so there is no right or wrong, but that was why that it's never been in there, because that would be a leverage as in, in the, in the budget process.
Takes the subjectiveness out of it if we put it as a budget item.
True.
It's in there, you get it, you will want, other than.
But, I agree with Commissioner Canada, there is something about the word bonuses here. If you say, well, we're gonna do it this year because we've always done it, that, to me, is ignorant thinking if it's tied to the budget, because can't tell me since nineteen ninety-five, the budget's been exactly the same.
That's right, ma'am.
We were over budget this year, so, but yet we still have money in the budget for bonuses. I don't know how that works, in the corporate world, that doesn't work.
But, but, if we have done this for eighteen years, twenty years, however many years it is between now and then, our employees are anticipating and expecting it, I think it would be remiss for us to say, we're throwing that out the window today because, you know, it's, just 'cause we've done there, I agree with you. What we've done in the past does not dictate what we do in the future. However, this is just lit across, I feel it needs to be in there for this year, and we need to better manage it for next year.
I agree.
And I'm talking twenty-twenty, because we've already discussed twenty-nineteen.
Yeah, I agree, I, my, my take on just because we've always done it is not a reason to do it. That doesn't mean I'm against this, it means I'm against that thinking.
Process.
And I don't disagree with that, except it's anticipatory by our employees, and I think it would be remiss for us to not do it unless there was some major crunch in our budget to say, oops, we just can't do it this year because we have this other item we need, seems to me like we ought to do.
Yeah, I, I would feel a whole lot more comfortable if we knew what kind of money we're talking about here, but that's on the department heads to provide that for twenty-twenty.
Right.
Live and learn, so, I mean, we could be talking a hundred and twenty times eighty employees.
Right, could be a lot.
So.
I have a question to ask, are you aware of any department in the previous fifteen years that has not been able?
No, everyone is, all, all the bosses have always taken care of their employees. Every single time.
Okay, further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion carries? Okay, very good. We can take a simple matter and make it complicated, but.
Touch up.
Wait till we get to supplemental budgets.
It's gonna be easy, Donna, get your, have some faith.
And, you know, they're real basic, there are six of them. Um, the first one, and I won't read them, I will just give you kind of an overview. It is the capital improvement fund, it is the West Cliff Land acquisition, to get it on the books. So, it's other financing sources and, and the money, and so I will add that revenue and it to, to the.
For our audiences' sake, let me just say, we're talking about some resolutions here. This has to be done by resolution to amend the budget.
Correct.
Okay, go ahead, so that's one.
The second is the purchase of the Roden Bridge water trucks, that was unanticipated.
It was a lease purchase, correct?
Purchase, and so it's other financing sources again, and it's the water truck acquisition. Pretty straightforward on those. The Roden Bridge, since we had to make a, a payment that was not, that we did not have funds for, it was not that we had them, but we had to use the fund balance. So, the revenue source is the Roden Bridge fund balance.
Payment for?
The Roden Bridge water trucks, and it was the down payment for the lease purchase.
Oh, down payment, the other is the.
The, to put it on the books, the whole amount.
It's the lease.
Yeah, so the first one was to get it into our system.
Right, into the liabilities and assets, yes.
The down payment, okay.
The next one is good news kind, it was the HUTF additional monies with the Senate Bill eighteen zero zero one, that was an additional over two hundred thousand, and so I'm adding that to the revenue source, and we spent out in asphalt oil and surfacing.
Exactly, twenty.
It was two hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars, and forty-three cents on that one.
Twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen?
Now. Now...
This was done, this was a 2018 windfall from HUTF.
So it's not, we're not receiving that in 2019?
No, it's, this is, 2019 will actually be 70,000, is what they're anticipating. We're not counting on that, because this was a cool thing. This is the bummer kind. For whatever reason, the state, they used to deposit all the money and do the different things, and search and rescue received checks. Well, this year, they've decided to pass it through the county again, which it's no big deal, it's just a check, it's a deposit, except I'm showing my expenditures as 10,000 more, because this wasn't any money that had been budgeted. So I'm putting, a revenue source is the state of Colorado search and rescue pass-through money, and the general fund, it was paid, reimbursed search and rescue for that same Just so we're not overspending. And the last one, it's three on one, three different items, but it's the airport fund, and the revenue source were donations from OT6 Ranch, Ambogo Energy, and Ambogo Aviation, which are all OT6. The total of those three donations were 36,000 dollars. So in essence, the airport fund was increased by 36,000. Part was paid for runway analysis, part was paid for a fuel upgrade, and the last was runway improvement designs, for a total of 36,000 in and out.
Okay. Do you want to, go ahead, sir.
I have a question on the 36,000. We had tourism pay for the runway testing.
Not all of it, 7,000.
These are just the OTs, because our budget did not have these allocations listed, so I've put the donations in, and then we've expended the money that's increased it and expended it on their...
I understand it's zero gain, but I was under the impression...
I believe that something was like 12,245 dollars. I'm showing the fuel upgrade system as 3,500, which was OT6 donation towards that.
Right.
But they were, when you see it, you'll say, okay, they're, because they have to be offsetting items, but you're correct, the prices were different.
Were shared on the...
These are, but these are what we received.
Resolution numbers, I see you don't have those.
And I did not ask for those, because I never know of when it would be in, so when you, you would get like 20, 21, 22, 23, sign them, and...
Twenty's the next one.
Twenty, okay, I was thinking it's 19.
So you need six separate resolutions, which you're looking at.
Yes, and I do have, and I don't know which, who gets them first. Do you put the numbers on, or do they sign? I'm not...
You're pretty confident 20's the next one?
Yeah, because we changed 18, 18 to 18, 19.
I'll go ahead and move that we approve the six amendments to the budget, resolution numbers to be determined by the county. How does legal test?
I'll second.
Okay. Approve all of these resolutions.
Yes.
The movement seconded to approve the six resolutions for the supplemental budget I believe that'd be 20 through 25, 18 dash 20 through 25. Discussion?
Cindy's got a question.
Go ahead.
Just Donna, we were told by DOLA, the year-end SAR award is going to remain in the approximately 10,000 dollars a year, so it might be something you want to put on the revenue.
I'm hoping that they get it squared away, that it, just as a check again. It was, for years, it was that way, and I'm not sure. But it could be, this, we had actually two checks for SAR, one was 400 dollars and something, but I would rather maybe not put 20,000 and have none, or back and forth, because at the end of the year, I could have 35 or 40,000, depending on how many missions there were that were, and then I would just do an offsetting booking entry or resolution to pass them. I'm hoping it goes away.
I kind of think the state's moving to everything.
Well, I know, I know.
No, I'm not, yeah, I am Krista fingered her, but not...
Well, the discussion is on whether or not to approve these motions. I don't mean to be rude and obnoxious, but if it, and actually, there's no public, or no public discussion allowed on this, because it's not an agenda item under new business. But, no, that's fine. I allowed it, no problem. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor of approving resolutions 18 dash 20 through dash 25 for the supplemental budgets request, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. I guess we would let, if it doesn't matter...
Yeah, I know there's so many that...
You can number them, and then we can sign them, or, because you record those, correct?
Yes. And then when I bring the budget in, on whichever day that is, December 4th or 5th, I will have additional certification of levies and the others, and probably a few last-minute items on supplementals to...
Thank you for bringing the dedicated service to the table, too. Appreciate that.
Thanks. Thanks for letting them have their bonuses.
Yep. As a finance officer, I would ask, maybe January, February, we talk about this again, so we formalize what we discussed today. I'll forget, I can guarantee. All right, thank you, ma'am, appreciate it.
Pause.
Yep.
Thanks.
So our next staff report, obviously, was planning and zoning with Jackie Hobbie, who had to leave, so gentlemen, you are welcome to come forward. We're gonna finish signing these documents real quick, but certainly come up, you can bring your chair, one, two, one of you guys, okay? Good morning, thank you for your patience.
Good morning, appreciate it.
I get too busy.
Don't forget our esteemed counselor.
Oh, God, I'm sorry, sir. Terry Napleton.
Nice to meet you.
I'm easy to overlook.
Fight more than sex.
If you don't mind, sir, we just, we can talk and do this, or I just don't want you to feel like we're...
Nope, whatever you need to do.
Being distracted. If we get this done now, then we'll have it.
I'm good.
Play your card.
Probably.
And just, gentlemen, so you know, I did set in on the last planning and zoning commission meeting that dealt with this issue that's before us, so, spent a lot of time and effort, work, site tours, and language change, and so on and so forth, maps, and...
I read the 13 conditions.
Yep, so that's really what we're here to talk about today, right? 13 conditions, which, that's it, sir. We're not gonna find it in November 2nd, we'll attack it.
Six-foot fence big enough to keep the deer out?
We're gonna put an eight-foot fence up. Just a matter of fact, the state requires that.
My only concern was, and it's addressed in number four, I just wanted to make sure that the fire protection district was comfortable with this, and where it says that the permit will not be granted until they say that it's acceptable, so I'm good with this, so, some of us have a motion on...
We were told that the county required a 10,000 gallon storage for the dry hydrant on the fire department.
Good.
It'll be a metal underground tank is what it'll be.
Put an eight-foot fence.
And obviously, gentlemen, this is, this is a modification of an existing SUP. It was, originally started out as a new SUP, and then we realized, no, this needs to be modified, so, again, I asked my question about the 50-foot setback on, my particular concern was on the map of the 57 feet from the private driveway over to the tank, and it is to the physical tank, not to the fencing, not to the barricades, whether those are metal, concrete, dirt, whatever they are.
How big a tank is that, 18,000?
18,000, yes, sir.
Has there been any conversation with the private owner? Private owner, that's 57 feet away.
That's Ed Lyons's private owner.
So, yeah, and I meant to also say, the SUP is actually Ed's, your business has the SUP, you're modifying it, correct? So the SUP is in Ed's business's name, and they're just working together, so, it's not your propane company's SUP.
No, it's not.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Ed Lyons.
Yeah. Okay, I would move that we approve the modified SUP for Ed Lyons.
Your turn.
Okay, I'll second it.
The movement seconded to approve the modified SUP for Ed Lyons property doing business with and as San Isabel Propane. This is a staff report, so we would not take comment from the public, but certainly discussion is appropriate for the commission.
Seems like it was researched well, all parties are agreement. I see no reason not to approve this.
Same here.
There was a question about the orientation of the tank. Originally, it was supposed to be east and west. They've reviewed that requirement, right?
The way it's said is it's southeast and northwest. It's facing the valleys as much as we can, and that's based on the valley going north and south.
Okay. And that's what that was all about, was so that we didn't see this big, long side of a propane tank when you're in town looking that way?
No, it was more about safety with the end caps, they aren't designed to pop off if there's a major thing. That's why they had them set that way originally, and then for us, it works better to have it.
I was gonna say, which wouldn't fit in every application, given the way it would it.
So they changed that on?
Yeah, and that was the fire department's.
A lot of it is the proximity of buildings close to the tanks and that sort of stuff, too. You look at Mr. Seifert's, they've gotta go that way, because there's buildings all around it. So no matter which way you place them, somebody, and in the history of propane, there's only been one instance of a major propane tank exploding like that, and that was over in Utah in 1957, when a transport gasoline aviation fuel truck ran off the freeway, landed underneath a propane tank, and exploded.
So wasn't the propane tanks, though?
No, it wasn't the propane tanks, exactly. And the propane tanks have high-pressure valve releases on them, but the fire department could not cool the tank because of the aviation fuel enough, and the propane tank end caps, the tank doesn't explode, the end caps blow out. Yeah, exactly. So, and my feeling is, if we would try putting it out, you've already got 120,000 gallons of propane in a city-block area, so that's one of the reasons why we wanted to get out of the area.
Okay. And then just for clarification, are you in the city limits or outside of Silver Cliff?
Outside the city limits, yes, sir.
Which is pretty obvious, that's why you're here and not at Silver Cliff Town Hall at their meeting, but...
And this is just the first step, because we also now have to get approval from the state to put this tank out, so it's...
Further comments or questions from either one of you gentlemen? Okay.
Will the county require a copy of the acceptance of the permit from the state?
I would guess probably to record that, huh?
What do you think, Kelly?
Jackie, it would go to Jackie.
It's like a Jackie.
I would think it probably should.
I'll make that up.
You'll follow up, sir.
Too much information is better than not enough information.
Yeah, okay. Good. Further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the modified SUP for Ed Lyons, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. Well done.
Okay.
Yep. So we went, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right.
Good job.
Yep, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Cindy's up.
Yeah, let's do, let's go ahead and do this, and I would suggest, or give you my justification. We were thinking about taking a break, but I think we'll go ahead and do this recognition, then we'll take a break, because we dropped an item on the agenda, and then we're open and bid let's.
That's good.
Let's do that. With that being said, Ms. Christie with no, with only one eye, because I've been trying to communicate to you with two eyes, and that doesn't work, does it?
I am, or I can, Christ with an E.
Oh, yeah, there you go. Yeah, if you want to send her, I'll make sure her first name only has one eye. Well, go, thanks for being here.
Good, good. Well, I don't know if you want me to do this, so...
Yeah.
Where's our official photographer?
Kind of by the door.
Well, I...
Yeah, we have a couple official, we have one official photography, but several cameras, so let us get organized.
Oh, sure, yes.
No problem.
Attention to orders, as we say in the military.
Just quickly, I guess, we generally, we've done this with a little PowerPoint presentation, so just imagine hurricane destruction, that's mostly what it is, but we, this is a long time coming, so apologize for the lateness. Took a while to get schedules synced and get this together, but we have honored this guy, when I say we, DHSEM, so State Emergency Management, everyone who went to, deployed to Hurricane Irma in September 2017, oh my gosh, yeah, September 17, and this was an EMAC deployment, so Emergency Management Assistance Compact, and that is when a state requests assistance from another state to help once they've exceeded their, once they've exceeded their capabilities to respond. So the call goes out from one state to the next, and we're expecting one from California anytime, we haven't yet had that. And then when that happens, our state office puts out a call to all of the local responders that have certain training that they're looking for. Sometimes they're looking for people with public information skills, damage assessment skills, emergency operation skills, firefighting skills specifically, or all kinds, I mean, go on and on, but there can be pretty specific on those. So when that call came out from Florida after, or before Hurricane Irma, this was kind of ahead of time to, you know, we know this is gonna be bad, it's looking, the weather's lining up really bad, it was at four when it hit land initially, so we put the call out to all of the folks that we knew were, had gone through the Emergency Management Academy, they were specifically looking for EOC type of work, and that was, that's what emergency managers do, so Cindy was able to go, and that is a big thank you to the county for supporting that, because that, when the state answers those calls for request, it's not, it's not the state's employees that are going. We're reaching out to the counties and saying, hey, would you be able to support your employee going to this other state on this deployment to help out during their time of need? That would be reciprocated, and it has been for Colorado. The last time we had an EMAC deployment to Colorado was in the 2013 floods, when we had 15 counties that declared state's emergency. So that, so it's a reciprocation. So anyway, a big thank you to Custer County for supporting their employees going on this deployment and helping out in another state during their time of need. And then for Cindy, this is a certificate from the state recognizing your, the time that you've served in the Irma on that deployment, and then this one is actually on behalf of the Florida Keys, making Cindy an honorary conk.
Oh, wow.
Actually, I'll write, I'll read this, because it's pretty cool. Cindy Howard, to be a clear-thinking, kind, kindred soul, eminently worthy to be an honorary conk and citizen of the fabulous Florida Keys, and is such entitled from this day forward to enjoy the fullest and bountiful pleasures and privileges so lavishly bestowed upon the Florida Keys by nature, and so artfully supplemented by the works of man. Pure smog-free, pollen-free, never-chilled air, superb fishing tongue from bridges, beaches, or boats, unparalleled swimming and frolicking in the crystal waters of the Atlantic or the Gulf of Mexico, gourmet dining on such delicateessens as Florida Key lobster shrimp, green turtle steak, and key lime pie, and wriggling the toes in the warm sand and the rest, as the rest of the world hurries by, and most important, acceptance by equal, by an equal, by the world's friendliest people. This shall be the... This shall be the prerogative of our honorary conk, and let no man interfere with the pursuit thereof, know ye then, and even though it is by adoption the above of henceforth and forward more, one of us.
There you go.
Congratulations.
So, the last three words, one of us.
Hold your other certificate up, too.
Does that mean everything is free for her down there? Never got to that.
Hold your other certificate up so she can get it up.
I think the tourism board in Monroe County has some...
So, I don't know about you, but I know what that means to us. Now, we have a lifetime to buy a conk salad and conk sandwiches.
And green turtle soup.
Yeah, I'll pass on the green turtle, but...
And it beats MREs any day.
Yeah.
And the pictures that we have show that it's really challenging, you know? There were, there were times, well, from the time we got there, we were there before the hurricane hit, the evacuation orders had already been met. We brought MREs, and we, that's all we had to eat. The grocery store shelves were bare. We couldn't get fuel. That was, that was really challenging, and that actually goes to the preparedness piece on the local level, because we had to seek out the fuel stations that had reserved their fuel for responder vehicles only. Otherwise, you know, you're just, you're flat. And so, it's a lot of preparedness and a lot of work. Thank you.
How long were you down there?
Just about two weeks, all together.
Moved around, or you were in one location?
No, we flew into Tallahassee.
Flew into Tallahassee.
Set up a shelter. Yeah, we built a shelter and stayed at the shelter the first night. Then, the next day, we drove to Orlando.
Yeah, we were in the logistics warehouse for the state.
Slept on the floor in the warehouse.
And we were there when the eye of the hurricane went over.
Yeah, yeah. Christie and I watched the eye come, you know, sat and watched. That was, that was very interesting.
Slept under desks that many?
Drove into Orlando on the freeways, and there were two other cars besides our convoy.
Hey!
And then, we drove down on September 11th. We spent the night in, yeah, in Miami-Dade Fire Station on 9/11, and they had a Peaceful World Trade Center there. And then, the next day, when the Army Corps cleared the bridges, we drove on down into the Keys, arrived, first, first visit to the Keys.
Stayed at, stayed on the Keys then for the majority of time?
Stayed in the Monroe County Emergency Operations Center.
Operations Center again.
Wherever we could pull up the...
It's a really fancy trip.
Yeah.
With your toes in the same.
Yeah, and then, my...
There was sea lice, so we couldn't do that.
I ended up working in the Key Largo Emergency Operations Center. So, then, we split up, and that's why I decided to wear my Key West shirt today. So, yeah, Christie made it to Key West, and then, we all ended up back in Monroe County.
EOC for the county EOC. So, yeah, we went to city EOCs first, and then migrated back to the county EOC. In Key West, that was an interesting, because the power is out everywhere. So, we're staying in hotel, a hotel with no power, and it's closed to the public, but they let responders in there. And that's kind of creepy, being in this big hotel, and not using your flashlights, and no water, no, you know, it was just a bed to sleep in, basically. But we were thankful. It was better than under the desk, and that's where we've been.
It was an experience.
I'll bet.
And you can never learn as much, you know, all the training that we do to, all the classes that we go to, but when you go deploy on somebody else's that day, and you see, you see so many things that, oh dang, I need to come back, and we need to do this, and we need to work on this, and haven't even thought about that before, then you come back, and you just have that experience. So, it's, it's super beneficial for them and for the people that go.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for making this happen today. That's nice. Recognition's never given out enough, so appreciate that. Thank you.
And we have the local ones, too, like the Spring Fire. So, it's a little different. It wasn't an EMAC, but the Spring, that's the neighbor helping neighbor concept, and that's super important. It's just as important, if not more so, than, you know, going state to state is helping your neighbors. So, appreciate this word from the county.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You might get elk's anywhere you get conk.
I saw you.
This year, hot off the press, they just came out today. I'm just gonna give, whoops, give you guys these for some nighttime reading. It's hot off the press this morning, so I thought, perfect timing. I'm gonna bring these in.
All right, well, thank you, Christie. Appreciate you being here.
Nice to see you.
Thanks for all your work. If there are no objections, gentlemen, I would stand in recess for about five minutes.
Good deal.
Then, we'll come back to order. Again, we deleted her, postponed the road name change on Firth Rice Road, on that subdivision, until November 30th. So, our next item is opening the airport RFP bids. We'll probably give those to council.
Sure.
Well, take your time.
Just two?
That's all I have.
And so, for the record, these bids were submitted to the county for, to compete for the bid to remove the earthen berm on the south side of the airport, and then reslope the north and, south end of the airport.
Right.
I'm stalling as long as I can.
Yeah, take your time, because I'm still snacking myself.
Remove the berm on which side?
On the east side, and then reslope the south end.
Hey, Brenda, call Donna up and make sure they didn't turn that one, there were, should there were three contractors.
I was gonna bring a letter opener, counselor, I forgot.
Find out if there's one over there.
I normally have a knife. Can't pinch anything here, so...
Here's a pin, you can slide under it, maybe? And the cubic yard again was...
Twenty-seven thousand, basically, a little more.
Twenty-seven or twenty-five one?
Twenty-five one. Or twenty-five one, when I said twenty-seven, that was where I got them. Twenty-five.
Okay. 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 Great. Okay. Thanks, bye. Are you tied up pretty late? Now, she doesn't have anything, but she was here in the, it was locked over there, so she didn't know if you could, like, call him and ask him if he...
You need a number? You got his number? My phone, my phone, yeah, there was three bidders, and he came over when she was over here, apparently.
Maybe.
We don't know. I got, we'll call him and find out. Brendan White.
Three seven one five zero seven five.
And they were, we were talking, that's why.
So, counselor, if you did not hear, we're waiting to find out if there was a snafu on the third bid.
Hey, we're trying to put in a bid for that airport article. If you could bring, can you bring that by?
I'm gonna have a problem.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry to tell you. I don't know who you're talking to.
I don't know either.
You have a process.
Okay, thank you. Bye. He said that Johnna was supposed to bring it in.
Somebody said she was here. Did Donna, Donna Hobby say she was here or not? She didn't say?
Donna does not have the bid. Okay, we'll move forward. Thank you.
Do you want him to bring it by?
No, if the deadline was 10 o'clock. I would certainly entertain a discussion if they had tried to get it to her office, and she wasn't there.
Right, that's what I was asking.
That was the case.
She had a note on her door.
Who had not initially, though, I don't think. Because she let, she came here, and then she left and went back. Would you call him again and ask if she had tried to bring it to Donna's office, and it's still what time?
Well, he asked me what time.
Yeah, that's...
Was just asking if Johnna was there.
He picks up the loose those peanut butter cups, dude. For all my hard work, didn't...
You can't keep track of them, counselor.
I'll lose all this paperwork before I lose the meatball. And I had to get rid of the Tutsi roll I had, because I thought I was running a turkey.
And that's what took so long, was the Tutsi roll. If anything else, just masticate it and swallow, but not with the Tutsi roll. We gotta work those over.
I mean, you could swallow.
Okay?
Yeah. Hang up in there.
Okay.
But we do know CPR.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks. He doesn't know.
Okay, all right, we'll move forward then, counselor, whenever you're ready, sir.
We just have two bids.
Yeah, could you tell us, first of all, who the two bids are from?
Okay, now, this bid is... Mountain Valley Excavating, Ed Lyons. And I haven't opened the, I opened it, but I didn't take the paperwork out.
Seifert Enterprises, probably.
I could be ready now.
Yeah, maybe.
I got another one. Can you rip that open?
That's a sealed sealed bid.
Close your eyes while you do it, because nobody can look at it.
Nobody can.
Get Clint that on her.
How about if I pull out my trusty knife?
There you go.
Did he read the first one?
No, rather, just told us who it was.
Drumroll's still, it's still going on.
See if the other bid was in my office, because sometimes when they can't find Donna, they drop them off there, but she was...
There you are, sir, and I didn't look.
You looked at the top.
I didn't. Really.
Okay, this one is from Seifert Trucking. So, I'll start with the first one. It's a form that Armstrong used. And I don't, I'm not gonna read the whole form, but they did say the bidders are to submit pages one through five of this form with their bid. And it sets forth the terms that are, how bids were supposed to be submitted, but this particular bid, yeah...
This Ed's?
And this is the one from Ed Lyons. Under, well, let me see, maybe I ought to read the whole thing. This is...
Take your time. Obviously, you've not seen these documents before, so...
The undersigned bidder, having examined the plans, specifications, and other contract documents, has designated, and all addenda thereto, having investigated the location of and conditions affecting the proposed work, and being acquainted with and fully understanding the extent and character of the work covered by this proposal, and all factors and conditions affecting or which may be affected by the work, hereby proposes pursuant to the invitation for bids published November 8 and 9, 2018, to furnish all required materials, tools, equipment, and plant, to perform all necessary labor and superintendence, and to undertake and complete the work required for Silver West Airport in West Cliff, Colorado, in full accordance with plans, specifications, and contract documents heretofore attached or by reference made a part thereof at and for the following prices. And then, under says, bid schedule, unit prices are to be handwritten or typed in both words and figures. In case of discrepancy, the amount shown in words will govern. Runway, this is schedule one, runway, safety, area improvements, item one, mobilization, 12,000 per, this is one lump sum, 12,000 lump sum. And he has the numbers written and the words, 12,000 dollars per, 12,000 dollars per lump sum for mobilization. And then, under unclassified excavation, $3.40 a cubic yard, $85,340. So, the total bid...
What was the cubic yard again, 340?
$3.40 per cubic yard for a total of, and that's 25,100 cubic yards. I should have read that. 25,100 cubic yards. So, at $3.40 per cubic yard, $85,340 for a combined total of $97,340. And he also submits a check in the amount of $4,867, made payable to Custer County. And this is a check drawn on First State Bank of Colorado. And it says, enclosed herewith as a bid security is defined in the attached instructions to bidders in the amount of $4,867, which bid security the undersigned bidder agrees is to be paid to and become the property of the owner as liquidated damages and not as a penalty for the delay and extra work caused hereby, should the bidder prevent. An award is defined in the instructions to bidders, or should the proposal be accepted and contract awarded, and he fails to enter into agreement in the form prescribed, and to furnish the required proofs of insurance and bonds within 15 days stipulated. Let's see, what else is? And the signature of the bidder, and this is actually dated November 14, 8:00 a.m., Mountain Valley Excavating by Ed Lyons, doing business as Mountain Valley Excavating, and his address and phone number. And that's the extent of the bid on this one.
I'm assuming the 4,800 gets split three ways.
I told him to make a payment.
That's true, there's bonuses in the crib.
And since the next bid is, it's the same format, so I'm not gonna read all of that introductory language. This is the bid from Seifert. I think the name is Seifert Trucking. See if that's how they put it here. Seifert Enterprises LLC. The bid for mobilization is $8,000. That's an even figure. And for 25,100 cubic yards of excavation at $2.50 per cubic yard, that's $62,750. And the total combined is $70,750.
Seventy thousand, seven hundred and fifty?
Seventy thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And they submit a bid security in the amount of check in the amount of $3,537.50.
One more time, sir, on the bid security.
Three thousand, making sure I wrote that right.
Thank you.
This is dated November 14, 2018, 8:37 a.m. Seifert Enterprises by Kent Beach Managing Member, and the address and phone number.
Okay, thank you, sir.
There's the check. Also, on First State Bank of Colorado, Seifert Trucking account for, at a amount of $3,537.50.
So, the total with the 8,000 would be 78,750.
No, it's, it's with 62...
Oh, wait a minute, you're right. Got it.
Yeah, 72,750, and then 8,000.
Okay.
Okay, and just for point of clarification, Mr. Coleman, you're here representing Seifert Enterprises? Okay?
Ed's here.
You're representing Mountain Valley, okay? So, counselor, in your opinion, both bids are appropriate and eligible for consideration?
Yes, they're both in proper form. They're on the form that was Armstrong used handling this for us. And both bids appear to be proper and accompanied with all the proper documentation.
All right, thank you, sir. I'd like to ask Mr. Commissioner Canada a question before we proceed if we may. Irregardless of what these amounts were, let's go back and revisit the process a little bit with Ot Six's participation. bit with OT 6's participation. So the understanding or the agreement with OT 6 would be what as far as this project goes?
It is... they understand that we couldn't do it for the reasons we've talked about before, and that we were going to do our best to put this out on a bid process to get the maximum participation we could, to get the price, the best price we could for us and them. And I gave them a... not indication, told them what we thought we could do it for. We cannot and could not supply the fuel. We've talked about that before because that was part of, you know, the thing, and they understood that. And are, we're ready to sign up for whatever this is going to be because they wanted it yesterday. And that, for whatever it was to me, I gave them a price range between, you know, $65,000 to $100,000 bucks. So we've had that discussion with them, and they're ready to go with that. And so it looks good to me, and, you know, I would say congratulations is in order for Syfert. And Ed, thank you for participating, but...
Well, we haven't voted on the bid.
I know, but I'm just saying that's...
I'm ready to say that quite subsequently, obviously.
And so, from a funding point of view, they always have the option right now, they're going to review it, right? As you would in any case, and fund it.
Just for my clarification, the entire amount will be paid by OT 6?
Yep.
Okay, I need that, I just want to make it on the record.
I'm not sure I understood that completely, so...
And I have a question about the bids just altogether, just to make sure I'm clear. The bid is the accepted price, there'll be no additional fees on anybody who bid for fuel...
Fuel, labor, equipment.
Right, and there is a...
So if we wrote the check...
Go ahead.
So we wrote the check today to either company that we don't have to worry about another penny being billed for unforeseen rock structures underneath the berm they're going to move, and who knows what else? This is the begin-to-end final fee, this is the cost, no matter what they find and what happens.
That's correct.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that we're on fair playing field.
And they understood that.
That, you know, Syfert, this is a very significant difference between the two, and I just want to make sure that the lower bid is, can't come back and say, "Yeah, but I need $20,000 more to do X, Y, and Z," which would make it basically the same as the second bid. I just want to make sure that I'm clear, it's a finish-to-end total deal, is what you agree with?
Yeah, I mean, that's based off the plan set.
Okay.
Wasn't that plan set...
That's all you can do.
And just so you know...
So does that include frost conditions?
That plan, that's right. That plan set included, it was stated, they knew exactly what the cut is, they knew exactly how much it was, and they also...
I just want a surprise at the end.
I just want to make sure we're on the record the whole way. There was concerns about the frost, and the fact is none of the fill is going to be used to build on, so that was discussed, and that wasn't an issue. Unforeseen weather, we had a provision in there that said we gave them three weeks to complete it, unless there's weather that prevents it.
Who makes that determination?
Us. And we can, it depends on, you know, what it is. You know, you've got to cross that bridge as you come, like in any contract.
It's laid out, and it's six hours a day of unworkable time.
And they get penalized if they miss it, $500 a day.
Okay. Okay, well, based on the information I received, I'd move that we accept the low bid. Mountain Valley, for making your bid, really appreciate it very significantly. So, Syfert, congratulations.
Again, we haven't voted on it yet.
But that is my motion.
But he's discussing it.
I move that we accept the lowest bid.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second it.
Appreciate that.
I appreciate that.
Been moved and seconded to accept the low bid on the airport excavation project. Low bid was submitted by Syfert Enterprises. Discussion. I do have a little discussion. It's more, I guess, this point anyways, about the process. I think in the future, if we are going to sit here and make these decisions, I think we need to see the bid plans in advance. Commissioners need to look at those.
Well, I'll argue with you a little bit. Because that's why you all appointed me as the program manager, and that's how the process normally goes.
Okay.
And we can, you know, that's, it was held with engineering expertise in hand. We can do that as a process if we want to do it from that point of view, that's great.
If I can comment on this, I'll put my two cents in. On this particular project, I'm not going to say on any future projects. We're really doing this for the benefit of a third party.
Right.
They're the ones who have approved what we're doing. They agreed with what the project is, so I'm very comfortable if they're okay with it, and if our representative is okay with it, since it's really their project, we're just intervening.
And if you look at that, in that light, they could have just donated the contractor, and said, "We're going to do it," and we could have, that's what we argued, so whether it's for our benefit or not, and we would look at the process, we would say, "All right, who's the contractor?"
And just on the other side of the flip side, if it's a project that we're initiating that is for our benefit, that we're responsible for, then I would absolutely agree with your...
That's a different story.
But in this particular case, since it's their project, we're just kind of the conduit. I have no issue with this.
Yeah, I don't agree. I feel differently. I think if we're, from the business standpoint, I agree 100% Commissioner Canada about you being the representative from the board. I'm asking for additional documentation prior to a vote, similar to today. I'd like to have been able to read through the bid plans, so if nothing else, I have an understanding on what we're asking the competitor, competitive bidders, to submit their bid on. I don't like sitting here not having any clue about the requirements of this or any other particular project. I'll be the same way if we build a justice center. Just don't feel comfortable in...
No, I agree differently.
Not to me, because who's ultimately responsible for this action today? It is not OT 6.
No, I agree with you. It is the county that's responsible, but this is a project that would never have taken place had it not been OT 6 saying, "I need this for my benefit, I'm willing to pay it." It's kind of like so many other things where we sign off on grants that we're just sponsorship for another organization. To me, I look at it that way. But I fully concur with you, if we're going to have our name on the grant, we need to know what's going on.
So along that line, from day one, and even last week, when we, after the last meeting, we said, "Go advertise this, get the bids in." That was published, and the website was there, and that the bid plans were on record, anybody could look at.
Correct.
And I did, you could, we could, and I could have taken the initiative and sent you the whole thing. It's not an issue. Could have done that. But we were in a, you know, we were working tooth and nail time-wise, and we held this with all the bidders together, and went through it, a process that I've seen many, many times. So I know, you know, I understand the angst. And sometimes that's what, you know, you've got teams out there, and you're hoping that you are doing what you're paid to do. So I don't object at all, we can have all the daylight we want. I have the same issues also with other things that we do, we want to make sure, remember, we, neither, none of us are in charge of this thing, but three of us are.
Absolutely. And we entrusted you to that.
That's right.
You came back, made your recommendation. Just like I asked Jackie Hobbie earlier, what is your recommendation? I trust her to make the best decision, and I voted based upon what she said, along with everything else I know. So, I mean, we can't, we can't, any one of us should not ultimately manage everything. That's why we break things down into teams.
Now, I concur with what you said, Commissioner Canada, and you're exactly right. I had the opportunity to go on the website, just like everybody else did. To be honest with you, I never even thought about accessing it there. Although I had a phone call and asked, "Where can I get the information to submit the bid?" And I said, "On the website." So maybe I'm admitting my own short side in this here, but...
And I agree with you, Tom, and, you know, there's, you know, we can't, that's why there's three of us, because we can't one guy do it all.
Right, exactly. The other question I have, and I mean this sincerely when I say, "I don't want you to take this as a challenge, this is business, this isn't personalities, to me, this is business." I guess, my feeling is that, and maybe I'm wrong, because we haven't had this conversation, right? That's the other awkward thing.
That's the other thing about heaven's three, we can't talk except here.
Frustrating. I would have liked to ask at some point, do we have a written document from OT 6 saying that they will cover 100% of this project?
Yes, and you've asked me for that before, and I...
I don't remember seeing it.
And we voted, I gave it to Clint.
I understand.
Yeah, it was in a public...
OT 6, and we, the agreement we had, just restate it. Everything they presented to us, they wanted to do, except that they asked us to share the cost of the original testing, because it was to our benefit to know as well. And then they asked us if, because they did not have, they were going to donate, they were going to do the berm removal themselves with a...
Leave it open up that far.
With a contractor. And they asked us if we could do the berm removal, and I said, "Sure, if you pay for the..." that was part of the process, the negotiation, "If you pay for the rental and blah, blah, blah." And then when that fell through, I got back with them and said, "Hey, how bad do you want? We can wait till we can do it." And I've discussed this with Gary, and he came back with the costs for us on renting it, and labor, and getting a motor grader out there to polish it up, etc. Would have taken six weeks or more, probably. And OT 6 says, "Well, I don't want to wait till spring, and I don't want to wait for you guys to get around to billing it either." So they said, "We want it yesterday," and I said, "Well, then you've got to be ready to pay for whatever," and they agreed.
Okay, and I'm, again, I'm not challenging you, say they have agreed. I do not remember seeing that document, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying it doesn't exist, I'm saying I don't have a memory of looking at that document. Counselor, you say you did?
Bill showed it to me a couple of weeks ago, I looked at it. It's a letter from them, but legally it is binding upon them. It's not a contract that we've signed, but we are acting in reliance on their promises, and it is legally binding.
That's all I'm indicating. I'm not challenging that you're not representing us. I just don't remember seeing it, so I'm struggling to see if I can find it.
They even went further in that letter, they agreed, because they were excited about the granting process, they are sharing 50/50 on all the matching costs with us for everything that we go forward with. Like, you heard the AWAS system, $400,000, or $175,000 system, and the runway lights of the future, $400,000, whatever that matching grant that we apply for is, they'll match.
We'll have a motion on that floor.
We do? Yes.
But you know what, Tom, I appreciate you keeping us all honest, there's nothing wrong.
Well...
Because I could be blown away, and someone could have snuck in under the door, and...
I guess that's probably the bottom line, it wasn't my intent. My intent was for me, as a commissioner, to know and have seen the documentation.
Rather than taking everybody's time, why don't I sit down, you know, pull it out I've got with me?
Well, because it may have an effect on how I vote, so... Counselor, you don't have a copy with you of that letter?
No, no, I don't.
I have an indication to move to postpone on this. I would defer that based on, Counselor, in your statements, that you're absolutely convinced...
Absolutely convinced.
...seeing documentation that OT 6 will cover this cost.
Yes, it's in the form of a letter, it's not a contract that they have signed with the Board of County Commissioners, but under accepted legal principles, they have bound themselves by promises they have made to us, and...
And I revalidated that before, knowing that this could go high. It could, higher than what they had expected, and they...
Well, yeah, certainly higher than what we had discussed.
Right, and actually, it fell right, and if you get right down to it, it's exactly what I told them, because when we discussed the, what it would take for Gary to do it, and the fuel cost to do that, we couldn't, we could absorb, if we did it, we couldn't do it in this case, so that added another $10,000, $20,000, $15,000.
Well, so my question is now, if you notify OT 6 what the bid is, it's going to assume will be accepted, will they pay that money upfront?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Actually, and it probably, it depends on how we state it in the contract, because I don't know if it was paid up or not.
This is what I put together, that we could do it for, based on the...
Right. This is what he gave me earlier.
Yeah, and again, I don't, I don't mean to be a pain in the behind here, but Counselor said it. I assume that they will pay for this. Well, I guess I'm going on blind faith, because I sure as heck don't have accurate memory of anything other than blind faith.
There is, well, it's not blind faith, Tom, they cut...
It is for me, because I don't remember seeing this letter. I'm taking him at his word, but I don't remember seeing the letter. That's all I'm saying. So it is blind faith for me to vote on this today. Because if OT 6, for some reason, goes south on us, who do you think's going to honor the contract that we're going to let?
We're going to cancel it. And that we have that option to do anytime. We didn't have to accept this bid.
No, I realize that. But if we do accept it, would we, that's...
But you're going to have the money in the bank, I mean, with the treasure upfront for this.
Right, we're going to have it here to spend.
I mean, that's the end of the game here, if they don't pay the money, we don't authorize...
As a matter of fact, let me point out one other thing. I didn't mention this in our commissioner items, but all along, we've had Task Order B that we've all agreed to, and you've seen. And that's the engineering design, it's the actual thing. There's two items that aren't funded yet from an engineering point of view, and that's the actual run taxiway to be done in the fall, etc., or in the spring. We just got a request from Armstrong for $9,500 invoice for the completion of the staking. OT 6, I talked to them yesterday, because when we got it, and they're sending the money. So before, you know, it doesn't go anywhere, and Donna's going to account for it just the same way she just did with the supplemental we just got. So they've been never questioning the approved cost that we've already had upfront. Then that included what we initially thought we could do this for originally. So it's a, they're not going to renege.
Just a comment, we had a very short window on the time the bids went out to when they came back, because time is of the essence of this. Respectfully, Mr. Chairman, I would really ask that you do not postpone this. We voted on this, we wore the contract, and we get this thing underway. These people have been beyond generous and wonderful to us. They have asked us to step on it and get it moving quickly. I have absolutely no doubt in my mind that I remember seeing, I remember seeing a letter, and I thought to myself, "This is great." And based on counsel and...
I would echo that and add this.
Commissioner Canada, I think we should move forward, just not postpone.
There's one other reason not to postpone, and that is, there's one permit that has to be yet bought, which you can't do until you get the contract, and that's the state permit to do it. And that can take, and the discussion we had, you all recall it yesterday, that was probably, could run from two weeks to two months, they said, because of the bureaucracy. And they thought that this time of the year, that there's not going to be that issue from a state approval point of view because of the late, late in the fiscal year. So they're banking on a two-week window.
Is it mining permit?
I don't know what it's called.
Stormwater.
Oh, stormwater.
Stormwater.
Has nothing to do with the actual excavation, because that's all on county, and it's not going off the land, so...
It's just, it's just a stormwater, right. We'll have to apply for the permit and then get all of our stormwater protection set up before we actually start excavating. We're looking at like a two-week window, get that done. Is that going to count against this?
No, we discussed that in the meeting. It's from when you start cutting dirt.
Any further discussion?
No.
Public comment?
Is, are you guys button on the notice to proceed?
That was going to be my question. That was gonna be my question to Counsel. Now, are we accepting a bid, and then do we have to turn around and give notice to proceed, or is this gonna be construed as notice to proceed?
Now, I think our position, we're accepting this bid pursuant, tentative, on us securing the funds...
That's right, and...
From OT six now. We've got a bid, which, and I don't know if we, how long these bids are good for, I'm not sure if that was in the...
I think it is, in the back. I don't know, that's a good question.
Okay, but I would assume that we could, we would have an answer, you'd have an answer very quickly from OT six now, based on these numbers, and as soon as they send the money, then we can authorize Syford to proceed.
Yeah, once we get to funding.
If I may, let me amend my motion to say that we accept the lowest bid and grant the authorization once the funds are secured.
Second the motion. A motion seconded to amend the main motion by adding the words, "and grant authorization to proceed after the funds are secured," debate. Hearing none will proceed to vote. Sorry, public comment? On the amendment, only on the amendment? Go ahead, sir.
I'm sorry, not on the...
Okay, all right. We'll proceed to vote on the amendment, then, which adds to authorize, to grant authorization to proceed after the funds have been secured. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posnay. Motion carries. Sorry, the amendment carries. The motion then would read, now read, that we accept the lowest bid from Syford Enterprises and authorize work to begin once the funds are secured from OT six ranch.
Correct.
Further discussion? Public comment?
We'll also need to fill out the contract that's inside the project manual before any of that starts.
Right.
Are you guys gonna want, we discussed a little bit yesterday on the phone, are you guys gonna want the qualifications, the financials, any of that stuff?
Remember that, that wasn't part of it, because of the way it's...
It wasn't part of it at this point, as we understood.
But once we let the bid, you're asking, does it become part of it?
Yeah, do you need...
I don't believe so, but I think we'll have to look, I'll check with the rest of the engineering with the contract, but I don't think it is.
That's all.
The way I interpret it. But we'll clarify that.
Okay, further public comment, further discussion from the board. Hearing none will proceed to vote, all in favor of accepting the low bid from Syford Enterprises for the airport removal. The airport, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posnay. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Now, we can say congratulations.
Now, we could appropriately say congratulations.
And thanks, Ed.
And say thank you. And thank you.
Thank you very much for the bid.
Thank you. Thanks, Jason.
Hey.
Kelly?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you.
Quite a terrible...
Okay, let's see where we're at here. Thank you, Mr. Kenda.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Again, I, my intent was not to challenge or question your ability...
Well, that's fine.
Speak in my piece.
You don't have to say anymore.
So, ratification of a letter of support for the San Carlos Ranger District is next on the agenda. Let me find that. We've had that in our board packet, gentlemen. It's...
I didn't print that out for you, Tom.
All right. That's why I can't find it, then, isn't it?
Yeah, it was already signed and sent.
Oh, that's right, we were ratified.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, my mistake. Oh, it does say, agenda does say ratified. I thought, I would move to ratify the action of the chairman signing this letter of support for the San Carlos Ranger District.
Action seconded.
Moving seconded to ratify, it's not debatable. We'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posnay. Motion carries. And we had sent that, because they needed it prior to the date of this meeting. I think you gentlemen were aware of that. Thank you, ma'am, I forgot exactly where we were at. Next item of business, the fire extinguisher inspection quote. Rocky Mountain Fire provided us that quote. It is for the fire extinguishers within the courthouse, search and rescue, and the airport.
And the sheriff.
And the sheriffs. And that was included in our packet as well. $345, I believe. Let me look.
14. 314.
314, okay. From Rocky Mountain Fire. Did you have an opportunity to see it, Mr. Kenda?
Yeah, I did.
Okay. There it is, if you...
No, I...
I commented to Ms. Brenda, when I looked at this, was pleasantly surprised that we weren't being hammered a big trip charge, particularly since we're going to the airport. I thought that was pretty reasonable. Five dollars.
Tell me where they're all going again?
Courthouse, search and rescue, sheriff's office, and the airport. And five dollars per, for an inspection, and I didn't think was unreasonable. I would move we approve the quote to Rocky Mountain Fire for $314 even.
I'll second it, but I have comments.
Okay, been moved and seconded to approve the Rocky Mountain Fire extinguisher LLC bid of $314. If it's a motion, we always better have an opportunity to have comments.
I know, I just wanted to make sure we didn't move too quickly.
Yep. Discussion?
My only question is, and I think it's under the limit that we need to worry about, is this without a bid, or...
Way under.
Okay, so we don't need to worry about it? Okay, that's all I was worried. I just wanted to make sure we weren't violating any of our policies.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Other discussion, public comment?
Why do we even vote on this? Why is this not just a, like every other bill that comes in, and we fix a typewriter, or we, oh, they're on typewriters, well, we fix a computer or something? Why is this gonna come, I mean, why is this coming for us?
I like typewriter, I mean, that's, yeah, good analogy.
It is a typewriter.
You know, you may be right on target here. This would be, it's an invoice, but the work hadn't been done, and so, I suppose this company may thought, we'll submit the bid in case they're seeking other bids. I don't know about that, but you're right, it could probably be handled as a normal invoice.
Well, probably because it covers the courthouse, the sheriff's, search and rescue, and airport, which falls under the umbrella of commissioners and not any one of them.
I see, so not invoicing each one separate. I got it, that makes sense.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay, to do that.
I mean, Donna could probably sign it, she might not want to...
I could, yeah, I could see it just being, it's not, it's not an invoice, that's the difference.
The motion you sent him?
He did, yes.
Yeah, okay.
It's not an invoice, so it wouldn't be paid, it's quoted, so that may be the difference right there. If it was an invoice, I would assume finance office would've paid it.
Yeah.
But since it's a bid, I imagine it ended up on our desk for that. Further discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote, all in favor of accepting the quote from Rocky Mountain Fire, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posnay. Motion carries.
Where are they based at, just out of curiosity?
Pro West. Get back on the proper page here. Grounds and building position, gentlemen, I'm sure you're aware that Ed Reinhardt has submitted his letter of resignation, which we forwarded on to, which Brenda forwarded on to the commissioners, effective November 28th. He is planning on moving back to the East Coast on the 30th.
Going fishing.
So, yeah, gonna go fishing and go after blue-clawed crab. I would move we accept Mr. Reinhardt's letter with regrets.
I second it.
Moving seconded to accept Mr. Reinhardt's letter of resignation. Discussion?
Yeah, what happens if we voted no?
He's stuck with the...
He stays here, kicking and screaming and not voting.
I think they just voted out the slavery thing.
I was gonna say, if we vote no, then we're also voting no on the slavery thing, right? So, we're gonna supersede that new upcoming state law.
I'm just curious, I mean...
Yeah.
Vote on it, okay.
Well, again, you know, if one of us was his boss, we would've accepted it or rejected it, right?
Isn't that pretty amazing?
But we're all three, so... And I've got some further discussion concerning this.
Position I'd like to discuss.
Yeah, I would too, but I'm not sure this is appropriate now, but we'll...
Let's finish voting on acceptance and then...
Do this, and then we'll have discussion on the other. Further discussion on the letter of resignation. Hearing none will proceed to vote. Sorry, I should've asked the public comment. Hearing none will proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Nay.
Motion carries, two to one. His letter of resignation's been accepted.
I say that because not to be cute.
Don't want to lose him, I know.
Not to be cute. I think he's done, from what I have seen, an excellent job, and I'm sorry to see him leave. That is the only reason I said nay, not to be cute or funny.
Right. No, I agree.
So, it really didn't pass?
It did, two to one. No, not unanimously, two to one vote. Yeah, I agree 100%. I mean, I just, my heart sank when he told me that.
Yeah, it was a surprise.
Just, he has done a great job. Well, yeah, it was a surprise to me, and when he first brought it up, I mean, I was certainly aware that he wasn't thrilled about doing the cleaning. He had asked if we could maybe find somebody part-time to do the cleaning to free him up. One, he didn't like to do the cleaning. I said, that's too bad, that's far from the job. He said, I understand that, I'm just being honest. And secondly, he said, I could easily spend 40 hours a week on maintenance. Sure, and I got that. I don't, those aren't the reasons he resigned, I can tell you. He resigned for personal reasons, so... So, that leads us to this conversation that I wanted to have today. I don't think we had it anywhere else on the agenda. As I'm sure you're aware, Donna Hobbie has posted this position to the two newspapers. She did that in an effort to compress the time, transition time between today, accepting Ed's resignation, or the end of the month, yeah. But, I spoke to Ed and asked him if he was comfortable with us advertising this position effective December 1. He certainly was, and offered to help train, transition, whatever that took. He said, if I'm here, I'll certainly help and do whatever I can for a new person. So, Donna felt like, if we did not get this in the papers this last week, then we're gonna miss the Thanksgiving timeframe. We'd be looking at the end of November before we could get the notice put out, so... That's kinda where we stand with that. So, they, she has advertised for this position as a possible of two, 24-hour a month, or one 40-hour.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, 24 hours.
20.
Per week.
Per week.
20 hours?
20 hours.
20.
You have it, sir?
I have it right here. I made it written.
24 to 40, yeah, so it was 24 hours.
Yeah, 24 to 40 hours.
Yeah.
Maintenance and/or custodial, it says.
So, I think that allows the county to pursue refilling the position like it stands right now, 40-hour, one 40-hour a week, one person doing both maintenance and custodial, or two, part-time, one doing maintenance and one doing custodial. Is that correct? Are we in agreement that that's how we want to proceed? That's the great question.
And what will really dictate that will be applicants, what they're interested in, and there are things I would like to just caution, ushered out, is that this decision should not be made based on saving, health insurance, how the benefits, you know, that...
Right.
Okay, let's see.
Yeah.
You agree with MacIntyre, just the way you acted? I'm just concerned, because if we said, oh, we have two part-time, we could save, it's not where we go with this. We go with whoever's the best, or two of the best people that we can for the position.
Yeah, if we cannot fill it with one person...
Well, then we'll fill it with two.
We'll fill it with two, and that was, I think, the whole thing that Donna was...
And I could argue either way, the two positions, you get focused, you know, you might do more custodial, custodial only.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, same with maintenance. They don't have to worry about anything else, they can strictly do maintenance. Am I convinced that 24 hours a week for maintenance is gonna be sufficient in the summer? No, I'm not. I think...
We'll face it, we'll be fine that way.
We'll face it when we get there, but if we can hammer out any of the maintenance stuff during the wintertime, and take pressure off of the summer, then I think we'd be ahead of the ballgame there. But I agree with what you're saying. In my opinion, it's not driven by whether or not we have to pay benefits, it's driven by whether or not we can find somebody that we want. We'll gladly pay the benefits, if we can find somebody 40 hours a week, we'll do no jobs. This is my opinion.
Sure.
Okay, good. I don't believe that an action item's required here, although if you guys so desire, we could, Chair would entertain a motion to authorize the posting of the vacancy announcement.
Right. We've already done it.
Yeah.
I think we just...
You okay? Move forward? Okay. All right, very good. I will convey to Ms. Donna our conversation pertaining to such. Let's see. Liquor license for the Alpine Lodge, Mrs. Kemper.
Yes, this is for the Alpine Lodge. This is their yearly renewal. And everything's in order, he's got his application. I requested a sheriff's report, and there was nothing on there. He's got both of his checks, the county check for $100, and then the state check for $500. And...
For an annual renewal?
For an annual renewal. Should be a brand-new one, yeah.
It's like a beer spot box. I mean, they gotta pay for these crazy fees.
Yeah.
Well, if they were ever gonna get a sheriff's report, it would've been from the other night, right? And that didn't happen, so...
And the rowdy commissioners are...
That's right. Commissioners show up and cause all kinds of...
I don't even know.
Okay, all right. Entertain a motion?
I move we accept the application from Alpine Lodge for renewal.
Okay, we moved and seconded to approve the liquor license application for Alpine Lodge. Discussion?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Kelly, why is this coming for us? And I don't mean that derogatory, but like, in the town, when these come through, the only time it goes before the trustees is if there's an anomaly, something that, you know, we've got the license, but here's the problem. I mean, is that something you could just routinely do, and we don't need a vote on? Because we do, I think I asked this question.
You asked that the last time, and there was some...
I'm just curious.
Yeah, and I don't know. It's always just been approved by the commissioners. I think because you guys are the authorizing entity for the county.
It's county, it's not clerk and recorder.
Right, right.
I think because of that, if there was an issue with a bar, and you didn't, you don't have to renew it, and you wouldn't want that to be a perfunctory, well, all they're doing is paying for it, and we're not gonna see...
The question really is not, it was if there's an issue, then it definitely needs to come before us, but if it's just a routine renewal, I'm just curious.
Do renewals not come before the town board every year?
No, Kathy approves them on her own, provided there's no anomalies. She said to us, like, everything's in order, the police report's in order, their fees are here, she just approves it.
She just approves it.
And then, I'm not even sure, she tells the trustees that it's been approved?
Yeah.
I'm just curious, why is the difference between...
I always hate to say that's because that's the way it's always been done.
Ooh.
So, I'm gonna...
I'm not pointing any finger.
I'll actually find out, because...
And I don't think that, in my view, I don't view it that way at all. I view it as, it's a county deal, and we represent, we work for the people of the county.
This is not a big deal.
And we're accountable for the morale and welfare of the county.
And I don't mean to make a deal out of this, I'm just curious.
So I think it's legit to...
I think it's county business myself. I mean, obviously, they're paying the county for this permit. And again, if...
Clearly, we don't have 100 of them.
Yeah, if we said to Kelly, you know, "Is there any problems?" "No." We're putting it on the clerk and recorder to make those determinations, what's a problem, what's not a problem, you know, that kind of thing. I'm not sure that's fair. Why legally we do it, I couldn't even begin, but I like the system.
My goal was not to create an issue here. My goal was more of just a question, how come it's different between the two?
Write that down in your book for the next applicant.
I'll do it again next year.
If I'm here, I'll do it again. And I'm assuming the, this liquor licenses are like everything else. It would require a majority vote to approve them, correct? And I wonder, I mean, I'm just thinking out loud now, if we have voted not to approve this, is there an appeal system?
Yes, there is.
For liquor licenses?
I've had that, I've been through that before, yes, they have a right to appeal it.
Yeah, sure. Okay, further discussion. Public comment. Hearing none will proceed to vote, all in favor of approving the Alpine Lodge's liquor license application. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Next item of business is opening the sealed bids for the Grape Creek County-owned property. We received a bid, sorry, sir, for that property. Gentlemen, you're knowledgeable as to the location? Thank you.
While the bid is being opened, can I ask this question? I know I've asked it before, I'm sorry, I earned all my gray hairs. Why are we selling this property? Why are we contemplating selling this property?
I can give you the long, drawn-out.
Don't do that.
No. You want the facts, nothing but the facts.
Yes.
It's an opportunity to...
That's how he would say it.
That's right, yes, ma'am.
Just the fact.
Can I have a peanut butter cup for the energy?
It's an opportunity for the county to realize revenues to help offset the cost for the Justice Center. That's what the number-one motivation was.
So if we accept the money from the county, we can count...
I hope that's in the motion, if not, I would amend, yes. That's the intent. Secondly, when I first started looking into this, it wasn't as a revenue stream for the Justice Center, it was looking at the county-held property, why we had them, why we were not converting them to funds that we could use for anything to help the county. And I could not...
Pick up tax revenue.
Yeah, and I could not get an answer to that, why we wouldn't. Now, why would we, number-one, was increasing the tax revenues. Typically, they're not gonna be significant.
Not much.
In this case, it's gonna be a little more, because I don't personally believe either one of these... Well, they might stay in agricultural. If they're converted and used as residential, but that's not our control. But if they are, then the tax income would be a little greater than if they remain agricultural. But to really peel the layers off of it, it's an opportunity for us to realize some income streams to help offset our lease purchase on the Justice Center, yes, ma'am.
So, can you tell me how much land it is and where?
Yes, and that's what I was asking, gentlemen, you knew where this property was? It is 2.3 miles north of West Cliff, on Highway 69, on the west side of the road, 15.75 acres. It historically had been a gravel pit for the county.
So on the west side, did you say?
On the west side of the highway, yep.
Part of it crosses the creek.
Yeah. Grape Creek bisects the property, and the... The letter we sent out to the adjoining landowners, who obviously this isn't adjoining landowner, because that's the only bid we're accepting at this point in time, the letter indicated that the county would grant a waiver of Senate Bill 35, because that is a county-generated decision, so that if somebody wanted to buy this 15.75 acres and build a home on, they could drill a well.
This was, this was, this bid process was open to the full public, not just the two adjacent landowners?
No, no, it went, this bid process was only to the adjoining landowners. Had we not received any bids, then we would open it up to the public. And they had to meet a minimum bid requirement.
I don't remember seeing the bid for this. Was there a minimum bid requirement?
Yes. Yeah.
Is that based on an appraisal?
Uh, yes.
And why would we not open this up to the general public?
That is a great question. I was hoping you wouldn't ask that, because you're not gonna like the answer.
No, no, but go ahead.
I ask it numerous times. I ask it in the clerk and recording office, I ask it in planning zoning, and I ask it in the treasurer's office, and I ask it upstairs in the assessor's office.
One of the B.O.C.C. commissioners, but go ahead.
Anytime, and particularly upstairs to the assessor's office. J.D., he had the most knowledge and background and history on it. He said, "The county has always honored offering the adjoining landowners the opportunity to buy land from the county before it goes to the public."
Boy, I got a real problem.
Told you you wouldn't like it.
So that's the way it's always been done?
I did not say that.
Yeah, you did.
Did not choose those words.
Yeah, you did.
But there's nothing, but there's nothing in writing, no resolution?
I could not find anything that directed...
What I know about it from history is that it's a courtesy, because in a lot of cases, the, that piece of ground was a result of a landowner giving up the land for a use the county could have, and that was a courtesy to give it back to them, the option to take it back.
Here's where my mind is going with this, okay? Obviously, an adjoining landowner probably should have a preferential right. However, I think it should go out for bid to the general public with a last write or refusal by the adjacent owner, because we're talking about taxpayer property, and the taxpayers deserve to get the highest and best value account for the land. So if we want to give a preferential right to an adjacent landowner, I say you put it out for bid, the adjacent landowner then has, and when you put in the bid, the adjacent landowner will have a right to, they have to bid it, just imagine, you know, has to, has the first write or refusal at the highest bid. If not, it goes highest bid. And if it's only one adjacent landowner, that solves the problem. I have a real problem restricting open bids to sell county property.
But, and I'm not, I can go either way on it. But my view is, that's why the minimum bid was there. It's all based on appraisal, and the taxpayers being protected to...
It's not good enough, though.
To get it.
It's not, in my opinion.
That's all.
It's not, it's not good enough, in my opinion.
Okay. And my comment would be, I disagree. I think it is, if Jackie, or all of us, or one of us picked a dollar figure and said, "Okay, this little thing," I would have some angst over that. That's why we had a, a, it's not an appraisal, we can't use that word, but a valuation...
Market analysis.
Market analysis, thank you. I could not get that under my tongue. Then I would, I would agree. Again, I have a little issue with, well, that's the way it's always been done, but had we not had the, part of the plan was to allow adjacent landowners first, honoring their proximity to the property, and not gone to the open public, then I'd have a problem. I think we're, we're looking out for the county, the taxpayers, and the value of this land. We're not giving it away by any means. It almost averages $5,000 an acre.
Yeah, it would've been a lot different if we'd have said, "What'd you give it for?"
Right, I said, "Hey, we wanna sell this, what'd you give it for?"
"What are you gonna give us for it?" "Have it back."
Respectfully, I understand what you're saying.
If you look at where it is, it is pigeonholed in there, and it is a courtesy, and it's sort of the code of the West tradition, kind of.
I'm not saying that the adjacent landowner does not have...
Preference.
The right to buy it. Just, I'm concerned about the value, because we are the custodians of that land for our tax base, our constituency. And I'm just very concerned about having a market appraisal. I'm assuming that was done by a realtor, not a full-blown appraisal. Market analysis is not sufficient in my book. I'm just voicing my concern, and I'm not in favor of this at all.
Goes both ways, you could get it under bid, too.
Yeah, and...
Just voicing my concern.
A bid could've come in and pinned the process.
And again, respectfully, I... I respect your statement right there. I wished it would've been earlier in the process. We could've looked at the process differently and maybe gone that route. Not saying we still couldn't, if that's what the board decides. I have a concern about that. We only received one bid. Now, doesn't mean we wouldn't receive bids from...
What, how many people were even offered?
Four landowners, four adjoining landowners.
You got 25% of the landowner's bid, if it was open to the public, you may have only gotten one, and then I'm perfectly comfortable, because we made our decision properly.
Well, and here's, here's the, to me, that's how the process would go. If we decide we do not want to accept this bid, then we sub, then we post it to the public.
Doesn't seem like you could do that if you had a minimum.
Wait a minute, before you waste too much energy here between your ears, it's a hole in the ground, Jay. Have you seen it?
It's not...
You're talking about the process, right? You're talking about the process.
I know, I know.
It could be a grand rock, I don't care.
Let me read this statement. "If there are no bids submitted and/or accepted by the B.O.C.C., the property will then be offered for sale on the open market." So, that process could happen.
Actually, we gotta hold this discussion, because we don't even know what the bid is.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, that's...
If we can discuss it, then it's more logical. Sure we can.
Well, see, he's only... They could've been $100,000 an acre, I would've said, timeout.
It's the process, right?
It's the process that's wrong.
Yeah, but you had time to address the process, so did I, when Tom started doing this. We all started looking, we were actually looking at a lot of different properties.
Honestly, kind of like Tom was confused earlier. I truly, you may have told me, and I don't remember, I may have had the right to go look, and I didn't. This could be totally my fault for not knowing the full process until just this morning. I did not realize this was not an open-market process.
Yeah, and I sent this copy of this letter on October 23.
I'm sure you did. I'm not claiming you one iota, it's me.
Yeah, I was just there. I get it 100%. And, but at the same time, I think we all need to hold ourselves accountable and say, "Gentlemen, either voice our concerns early, I'm not picking on you, because I'm picking on both of us, do our research a little better, take the initiative to go look, I don't know." But, again, I actually appreciate this conversation prior to knowing what the bid is, because we're not talking about the bid, we're talking about the process, and that's important, that we do that.
I don't care if it's a personnel's, I don't care if it's a redone's, as long as it's in the county.
So, I'll tell you, I am worried, because when we had one, I get it that it's 25%. We wouldn't get 25% of the public bidding on this, that's for sure. So, I would just caution that if we have to start this process over again, we may be at risk that we get zero bids.
I concur. I don't see how you can back up now.
Can't back up.
You advertised a minimum. If he, if the one bid is at that minimum, then, I mean, that was your word. That's like raising the price on a product at the store.
It's like a bait and switch.
This time, the process you can talk about, but this time, it seems to me like if you advertised a price and a process, you better stick to it.
Okay, I don't believe she has a valid point, and I'll tell you why. Because of this sentence that we put right here in the letter. If there are no bids, or B.O.C. does, chooses not to accept the bid, then the property will be then offered for sale on the open market.
We still have to look at the bid.
It's in the process that we can do that, is it right? I'm not gonna, I don't know, I don't know about that.
It might be legal, because you put those words in, but whether it's ethical and the right thing to do, and that's, to me, the bigger issue. I don't care what the legalities are, it's the right thing to do in this case. I don't, I think that your process discussion is the right thing to do as well, but not for this case.
Yeah. You know, there was a couple of routes we could've gone. We could've foregone the market analysis and do as we did with the airport project, submit a bid. There was no minimum on that. We put the minimum on, the minimum bid we would accept on there, for your very, for the reason I think you have concerns about, the principle is that, so we're honoring our taxpayer responsibility, or our responsibility to the taxpayer. I think it would've been irresponsible to put that out, get a bid for $29,000, and accept the bid and move on.
Or for $10.
Or for $10, regardless of what that...
I'm in for $10, by the way. I'm in for $10.
Okay, you're in for $10, but, um, so, that being said, let's listen to the bid. We certainly can continue this discussion. We don't have a motion on the floor yet, correct?
All right, I move we...
Well, you gotta have it here. I've got two questions.
Okay.
The letter that was sent out, did we have a survey, a specific legal description of this property?
Sure did.
So there's not any question about what the person is bidding on?
I could read it to you.
Okay.
Yep, definitely.
No, I just needed to know. And was, was the minimum amount set forth in the letter?
Yes, sir.
What was that?
$73,000.
Okay.
Sorry, $72,000.
All right.
Let me read that, just to clarify. "A market analysis has been completed for the 17, 15.75-acre property, and the minimum bid the B.O.C.C. will accept is $72,000. Location of this property is 2.5 miles north of West Cliff on Highway 69 North, west side of the highway, and then the legal description follows. If you are a successful bidder, buyer, successful bidder slash buyer, Custer County will provide a subdivision waiver of Senate Bill 35. The transaction is not guaranteed that size, soil conditions, or flooding conditions are such that a zoning permit, well permit, or series disposal permit will be issued. Transaction will be conducted with the understanding that all expenses involving the required improvements shall be the responsible of the new landowner, responsibility of the new landowner and not of Custer County."
And the adjacent landowners, that was all determined with J.D. by looking at the maps?
J.D. on the county maps. He gave me the names and addresses, that's correct.
I'm very torn, because Jackie's point is well-taken. It's kind of our word. We kind of said how we're gonna do it, and we always honor what we say. The first sentence is, "We can reject the bid," but I think the process is just terribly flawed, so I'm torn. So I think your point could take it.
We move forward and we work the process on the next one. Different if we could have a problem.
It's a great point, and let me explain. We have moved forward with this process on the Rosina property as well. Now, I can't tell you the exact date that those letters went out to the adjoining landowners, but the contract, or not the contract, this letter says that the...
Both were advertised.
Yeah, yeah. And that they have 14 days from the date the con, of this notice was made to the adjoining landowners.
To the adjacent landowners.
Same process.
This is a handwritten letter dated November 7, 2018, addressed to Dear B.O.C.C. I would like to submit a bid on the old gravel pit that adjoins my property. Big E Ranch Limited, Cecily W. Ketterer, managing partner, 6267 Kenwood Avenue, Dallas, Texas, 75214, there's a phone number here. Email address, C.W. Ketterer at AOL dot com. And I assume that signature is C.W. Ketterer.
We don't know if it's a cash deal or a finance deal or anything. They'll be there responsibly.
Yeah, doesn't really matter, no.
They have to give us the cash however they do.
Yeah, we don't.
We're not issuing a request. And if, before, I have some comment on this too, but let you all look at that letter first. I just, the county can offer this in different ways. We could, if we offer it by quick claim deed, we don't have to do any title search or anything else, the way, all we're agreeing is we'll sign over our interest to you. And if there's any question about it, then they would have to do the title search. If we go through a title insurance company, we'll have to pay for the title insurance policy. If it's just a quick claim deed, I can prepare that, and that's all we need to do. So I just wanted you to understand.
And if we, just for Clark, if we don't do a quick claim, sorry, then what?
It would be warranty deed, and we would have to have title insurance, because we're...
Warranty deed.
Agreeing, or, it's our, yeah, we're agreeing that it's good title, and if there's any cloud on the title, we'd be legally responsible for addressing that. So, it would, obviously, be to our advantage just to quick claim it. But this may be a matter of further negotiation if the bid itself is accepted. Because I think it wasn't clear in the, the request for bids.
Yeah, I.
We're gonna continue discussing this before we put a motion out? If we are, I have some.
Yeah, I think, I think it's reasonable, don't you?
Sure.
We can have informal discussion prior to.
Sure.
Okay.
My view is seventy-three thousand bucks buys a lot of ground in different spots up here. You can get 40 acres in some cases. That's a darn good price for that, and that's based on the market in that kind of an area. It's, it's got a little bit of grass. The rest of it's the side of a hill and a hole. So, you know, I think, uh, we're lucky to even get that bid now. And that's not to say that somebody else couldn't see that and say, well, but I would be willing to bet if we put a minimum on it, they're gonna, we're gonna get three bids at $1 over, you know? Then what do we do? If they do.
Well, yeah, we've already got the minimum.
We got it already, and so, I, I think, given the process was already in place, and I do believe, because I've been, this is me from a perspective of historically being of residence in this valley and the family here, uh, there's always been the case where the rancher, the landowner adjacent, and that doesn't mean it's right, Jay. I'm just saying that that's.
I'm not saying they shouldn't have the last try refuse.
That's right, that's right.
I'm prepared with that.
And so, that always should be the case.
I, I, that is not my issue.
And we can always set up a process that says, uh, you know, we could have set the minimum higher if we didn't want it to, than what the market assessment was, if we were really wanting to push it, you know?
We did.
Yeah, all right, we did. So.
Well, let me.
Not a bad thing.
For the matter of transparency, let me put this out there, that the market analysis was set up on a low, average, and high value. And so, we went the middle of the road.
It's a little higher.
Yeah. That minimum bid was set between the low and the average.
Which kind of, you know, it's amazing, it's good that he bid dollars he must want.
I know. Process, and I respect that.
$10 bid is the process I have.
Okay, but we.
Uh, yeah, unless we vote differently, uh, when we sent these letters out, I was convinced that we were all on board with the process.
Yeah, man, I apologize for not doing my homework like I should.
Okay, um, I would move that we accept Big E Ranch?
Big E Ranch Limited.
Limited, Big E Ranch Limited, uh, C W Ketterer representing.
Cecily W. Ketterer, managing partner.
Uh, yeah, that we, sorry, let me restate now, that, uh, I move that we accept the bid from Big E Ranch on the, uh, property set forth in the letter sent to the adjoining landowners for seventy-three thousand and one dollar.
Can I make a suggested amendment to that?
Uh, let's get a second to the motion first. There may not be anything to amend.
I'll second it.
They moved and seconded to accept the bid from Big E Ranch, discussion.
Can we put in that the funds are strictly restricted to the Justice Center project? And, in the event, and this is Jay talking now, in the event that the Justice Center project is not come to fruition, that money be earmarked for, uh, the landfill?
Okay.
I don't want to throw it away, I don't want to go general.
The gentleman's detailed.
Uh, my conversation ahead of time with Ms. Donna, which maybe we can follow up on real quick, was this money would be earmarked for capital improvement, line item in the budget. Ms. Donna, my question is, if we put this money from the sale of land, capital improvement, do we further earmark it or not? And if we don't, if the la- if the Justice Center thing never came to fruition, could we then legally use that money, roll it over to be used earmarked for the landfill?
I would not restrict it further, only because capital outlay money is restricted money. That 24% of the sales tax cannot be used for anything but capital projects.
So if we put in capital projects, can we still use it for landfill if we had to down there? Uh, I'll second your amendment, sir. Amendment seconded to amend the main motion by adding the words, uh, earmark the money to go into capital outlay for use on the Justice Center. Is there a second?
I second.
Oh, you did second.
No, I'll second the amendment.
All right. It's been moving that second to amend the main motion by adding the words earmark the money. Dedicate the monies to go into capital outlay, line item budget. Capital outlay, capital improvement.
Yeah, no, you're good. Will that be, this particular one going this year's offer or next year's?
Uh, I would say this year, I don't know that it matters, but we'll probably receive the funds. I mean, if the transaction's held this year, I'd say we do it this year.
It does, but I could put the revenue for next year's, so I just need to remember that in my mind. I just need to remember that.
So let's roll it to 19.
It's going into a bank just to hold the mastiff, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, okay.
Are we still in that, we in discussion?
Uh, we're in discussion on the amendment, yes.
Okay. I'll have a question on the main motion.
Further discussion, public comment, hearing done, we'll proceed to vote on the amendment, uh, which states that we will earmark this money for capital outlay, uh, originally designed to be used to offset lease purchase. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay, motion carries. We'll now, uh, have discussion on the main motion, which states that we accept the bid and earmark the money to capital outlay.
I had another question, I was just looking at the map here. How long ago was that used as the landfill, or gravel pit rather?
Uh, it was pre-1985.
I'm just wondering if there, like with our landfill, there are restrictions that go on for a long, long time. And I don't know if with this gravel pit, or if there are any state regulations that place restrictions on it.
Let me, uh, I sort of clarified that, not entirely, but I went out there with Rusty, and went through it with him, and he, and he, at that time, they actually reclaimed it. It's already been knocked in and, and landscaped and reseeded. So I believe that it complies with whatever the requirements were by the state at that time.
All right, I just, but Rusty was familiar with it, he was working through the counter.
He worked there at the time.
Uh, and to follow up, though, Jackie did do the legal research, contacted the C D P H E, that had property has been released.
Okay, that's good.
Yep. So, further discussion.
Just for clarification, the minimum was 73 or 72?
Uh, 72, according to this letter, I'll be honest with you.
So she bid a thousand and a dollar.
Right.
Okay.
Let me look at one other thing real quick, because had you asked me before the meeting started, I would have said 73.
Thought that's what you.
Let me double check.
And when you read the letter, it was different.
Yes, let me double check on the other adjoining landowner and make sure they were. Yeah. Yeah, seventy-two thousand dollars.
So the bid was a thousand and one dollars above the minimum.
Right.
Got it.
Uh, further discussion, public comment. Hearing done, we will proceed to vote on accepting Big E Ranch Limited's bid of 73,001 dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay?
I, I'm gonna abstain, because I'm concerned, and, and I would like to record the fact, I have no idea who this particular landowner is. There's nothing personal here. It's the process I'm concerned about, so I'm gonna abstain. I'm not, I'm not going nay, because I'm not opposed to it, I'm just gonna abstain.
Okay, motion carries on a two to zero vote with one abstention. Let the record show that, please. Okay, thank you, appreciate your.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I appreciate your voice, my, my concern.
Are you legit?
Gotta do it, gotta do it. Okay, um, now, counselor, so. Move forward, then, from here, we notify the successful bidder?
Yes, that the commissioners have voted to accept the bid of 73,001 dollar. And, I think, if you want me to do this, I can write a letter to her, ask her how she plans to, or how the entity plans to pay for this, and I, I basically want to say the county, you know, would prefer to just issue a quick claim deed, you know, surrendering any interest we have in this property to you, it has been in the hands of the county for I don't know how many years. Obviously, a long, long time, there's been no claims on it. And I don't know whether she would accept that, or if she would insist. If she's gonna get financing, she's gonna want a warranty deed. If it's a cash deal, she may be, may not care, but it's gonna be the lender that'll really determine that.
I wouldn't, I would, I know how you stated it, but you said would like to. I would say we will issue a quick claim deed, that's our.
Well, that could.
That's part of your language, but my point is, you don't wanna open it up.
If that was part of the bid, I would agree with you, but I think we ought to just leave it.
Now, maybe.
We just need to do that, see what they say.
Well, I think I just wanna ask how she intends to pay for this. If it's just a cash deal, then we'll just, excuse me, give her a quick claim deed unless she says otherwise. But if she's gonna finance this, um, and she may wanna roll it in, you know, finance her other piece of property.
She, that's right.
And put it all together.
Sure.
Well, I'm certainly no real estate expert. I don't, philosophically don't agree with the quick claim deed. I, I just feel like if we're selling a piece of property to honor that buyer and that 73,000 dollar bid, we need to provide.
And frankly, title insurance on a piece of unimproved ground is not gonna cost a whole lot of money, so.
So, that's my opinion. I would go along with you asking, would you be willing to accept a quick claim deed, or would you prefer a warranty deed? And let her decide that, I think she deserves that right with 73,000.
Sure, and I, but I, before that, I wanna find out if she says, you know, I need, or, did we, was there anything in the, the letter that went out as to how long they would have to close the deal if the bid was accepted? Okay, how long do you want to give her to come up with the financing, or with the money, however she wants to do?
Forty-five days?
I, I, I don't think it's fair to.
No, I don't think you want it.
I don't think it's fair to box them in, I mean, they made.
Especially since it's the only bidding.
And then they bid on it, and now they can perform, and we're just gonna have to look like any deal you go wrong.
Our intent to close on this prior to the end of the year.
You'd like it closed by that.
Sure.
Kelly, I just need a copy of this letter, and I'll write to her and let her know that the bid's been accepted. I'll give it to Brenda.
Is that the original letter, or was that a copy of a letter?
That was what she mailed, we saw.
Bring one up here.
So what is the correct term if you love to vote and make a comment? I know there's a term that I can't remember what it is.
Oh, qualify your vote. Absolutely. And anytime, gentlemen, and that's, I thought about this the other day, because planning commissioner does it on every vote.
Who does?
The planning commission goes around and, I guess they could abstain, but they say, they vote, and then they go around and poll their commission, justify your vote, and everybody justifies it. But, that's their chosen method. Our, certainly under Robert rules, anytime you want a roll call vote, all you gotta do is ask. And I would never insert that, I would allow that, yeah. So, because I think there are times when you may wanna vote, but by golly, I wanna justify my vote.
And that's why I want to say, well, I, I have, we not think, I don't know this family. This is not anything personal, I'm just concerned about the process.
Yeah, I thought about that after that planning commission, I thought, yeah, we need to make sure that all of us have the equal authority to request a roll call vote, and really, there's only one, two reasons. You want the public to know how you personally voted for it, you can't always do that in a voice vote. And two, you want the opportunity to qualify or justify your vote, and that's the only time you'd ever do it on a roll call. You can't do that on a voice vote. Because it may be different than your debate, see, that's the thing. Your discussion may be one thing, justifying your vote may be another, and you might justification could run the gamut, you know? I want, my voters in my district to know I oppose this. That's why I'm voting no, I mean, that's.
We've done that in the past.
Yeah, if you're not, if we're not, if we don't talk about it, it seems a little awkward, because any of us can request a roll call vote. So, just need to have that upfront. So you, moving forward, then, will write her, let her know?
Get that in the mail today.
And, and then I wanna ask again specifically, will you allow her the choice, or are you gonna tell her what we prefer?
I'm actually gonna ask her how she wants to handle this, if she intends to get a loan, or if it's gonna be a cash deal. That'll, you know, if she says she's got the money, then I'll tell her we can get this done real quick if, you know, she gets a certified check, and we can have a deed, a quick claim deed for her. And see, I'm just trying to see, I mean, she owns a property, or Big E owns a property at 105 Fourth Street.
Right, that's her home.
Okay, so, all right, that's what I was.
But the property she owns adjoins our property on the north.
Right, and I saw that, I was looking just to see if Cecily and Todd Windells. I was just looking to see how it, but, okay, well, I'll get a letter out there right away, but I'm gonna leave it. I wanna find out, first of all, how she wants to handle this, if she's gonna need time to get financing, because if that's the case, then title insurance for sure, which is our obligation to pay for.
Again, I, I guess I wanna go back and visit the process a little too, and I'm just drawing this out. Is it any of our business whether or not she's gonna pay cash or get a loan, or should we?
No, it's not.
Should we say?
No, I, only, if she's gonna finance it.
You care about the time, that's why you're wondering if she's gonna take the time to finance it.
Yeah, I need, I want to just set up some kind of a, you know, a timeframe to get this done. Hopefully, we can have it done by the end of the year. And frankly, like we talked about, the title insurance is gonna be so minimal, maybe we shouldn't even make an issue of that. I, but that's what's gonna happen also, if there's gonna be financing, then I need to draw up a contract that she has to sign, and the board has to sign, where, you know, a purchase agreement for, and because that's what the title insurance company's gonna need. I don't wanna cor-.
Yeah, but they're, she wouldn't finance it through us.
No, but the, no, she'd have to go get a loan, but the title insurance company needs to have a contract to start working from in order to do the title insurance.
I just, I'm not real comfortable in, in wording this letter to say, depending on whether you're gonna pay cash or, or finance it, this is how we're gonna, we proceed. I just think that's awkward for me, I mean, I just would like to say, would you, would you be satisfied with a quick claim deed, or will you require a warranty deed? I mean, that's, that's where I'm coming from. Does that make sense, or am I just overthinking it?
I think you're overthinking it.
Okay.
Yeah, because, uh.
Well, just to be very candid with her, that we can figure it out and tell us. Very quickly, if, you know, if she said it, the quick claim deed. If she doesn't understand what it means, you know, I'll be happy to explain what it is, and we're not guaranteeing we own it, we're.
I think I'm happy with Clint, he's talking to her, writing her whatever.
I'm gonna forward, uh, all of you gentlemen, this letter again, particularly you. It's not on the letterhead here, because Brenda printed that off on the letterhead, but let me do that right now. And then you'll have that wording as well. Think it was Halloween, the way my computer's acting today. You want a copy?
Sure.
Give me a copy.
I already have you on, but, yeah.
Nice thing about electronics, that you don't have to, and I'm not, I don't mean that you didn't send it previously.
Right, no, I'm, gotcha. And your name again?
Oh, yeah, Kelly. It depends on the day.
Clint J. Bill Kelly. Brenda's already got a copy.
Clint. You said Clint.
Yep, 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 I'll put, uh, Grape Creek Property as a subject.
You hear those fish in that creek?
Yes. Do you want the Rosita property as well, I might as well again, huh, oops?
Why not?
Let me double check and make sure it's back on.
What do we tell them the Rosita stuff was worth?
Eighty-eight thousand. I will double check, 'cause I don't know this for a fact. Jackie told me that her assistant would send out this Rosita letter last week. If that hasn't happened, and if you wanna revisit the process.
Don't flag us now.
But now, I don't know.
Okay, here, here's what I would like to recommend, based on what you just said. If it has gone out, we honor, because I think Jackie hit it exactly on the head. We cannot reneg on something, a promise that we made, even though we have the right to. The spirit is just as important as the letter. If it has not gone out, then I would like to suggest that we revisit and decide if that's how you wanna do it. Is that reasonable, gentlemen?
Sure.
Okay, so that's been forwarded to you, gentlemen, and lady.
Is the legal description set forth in what you're just sending to me?
Yes, okay.
Yep.
Did we have to survey, did we survey that, did you get, wait, did we already have? Did we pay that expense?
We had the legal description on this one, I asked Kit, and Jackie talked to Kit, and said we needed legal description on this one, that we could not find one, and Kit provided us for the legal description, so I'm assuming that he surveyed it, I don't know that.
Without opening a new can of worms, Kit normally charges the county when he does that, since he charges us, would it be in our best interest to suggest, maybe get a bid for more than one person?
To survey it? Uh, I don't know that, he's our surveyor, but you're talking about not county surveying here.
Right, but even as the county survey, he charges to survey.
Yes, but he didn't do, this probably was county survey, his surveying falls into two realms.
It's kind of a gray area.
Right, county and non-county.
I'm not trying to open a can of worms, I'm just concerned again about being responsible for our taxpayer dollars.
And in this case, it's watering at the bridge, 'cause we've already got the legal description, now how we got that, I can't sit here and tell you, 'cause I never followed up with it.
Yeah, we didn't pay, we didn't pay, okay.
Not that I'm aware, not that I'm aware.
It's fine, cool.
I just know they forwarded me the legal description, I included in that letter.
Fine.
So, I, how we got that, I should be able to tell you, but I can't.
It's fine.
Okay, uh, so, thank you, let's move forward to business, boy, you talk about the acronym city, the Community Development Block Grant, grant application from the Upper Arkansas Area Council of Governments.
That'll be signed the agreement of Custer County.
I'll second it, move on.
They've been moving to second it to sign the Community Development Block Grant Business Loan Fund Application, discussion.
Is this a continuation of something that's going on?
Yes.
It actually has benefited at least one, maybe more, businesses here, it's a reasonable, I've read it to the best of my ability, because I think on page 20 I doze, but I think it's reasonable to provide the air renewal, and I think we oughta just go ahead and do it.
Okay, I just wanna read you a quick email string, please, because I think it's pertinent to where we're at. I originally contacted Mr. Bogle, asked him if he would be interested in sharing his input and insight concerning the grant, he subsequently sent a letter to Judy Lonnas, or actually, he responded to me and said, I talked about this request with Judy Lonnas, apparently an administrative necessity every five years. He included myself and Judy on that email, he said that the grant goes through Chaffee County to the COG for the benefit of all four counties, there isn't any risk to Custer County, this funding vehicle is supported in part, along with banks, a business here in town to help acquire a building. Judy responded, yes, that is correct, Upper Ark COG has been providing the Small Business Loan Program for more than 30 years, several Custer County businesses have benefited, there is no cost or liability to the county, Chaffee County serves as the grantee and passes the funds to Upper Ark COG, we do the program administration and compliance, Custer County has a representative on the committee that reviews the loan requests and determines the approval, this is a routine renewal of the agreement with the state to make sure, to make funds available for businesses in our region, Judy Lonnas.
Is that an email?
That was an email.
Can you forward that, can you, I can write that.
Anyone else interested in that email?
Nope, but that's a good one, and it shows that we haven't got any risk, so to speak, and we benefit, so.
Yeah, I agree. Uh, there was a motion, did I hear?
Yes, there was.
They've moved and seconded that we approve, or that we sign the Community Development Block Grant Business Loan Funds Application. Further discussion, hearing none, public comment, hearing none, we will proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay, motion carries. I think there's five or six signatures required here, because this whole thing is broken out into different sections.
Here.
Oh, I got it, just snuck away from me, so, I think, yeah, just, they're asking for the chairman of the different counties' board of commissioners to sign, so... And then, Ms. Brenda, you prepared to send this on to the appropriate?
Sure.
Okay.
Can I make a comment while you're doing it?
Certainly.
Brenda, thank you for what you did on the courthouse grant, that was a really excellent job you did, thank you.
Thank you.
I think I sent you a little note, saying, good job, or something.
In that same vein, I am actually kind of excited that we did move our meeting, so that we can all be there, I think that's gonna have... Am I thrilled about another trip to Denver? Never.
No, I hate going there, but this is important stuff, gotta do it.
Like Mr. Kanda, I struggled getting around Denver, it's always a challenge for me, just to find that building and loan.
Park?
Park. I did park last time, and then went in, and the guy said, where'd you park? I said, oh, yeah, I wouldn't recommend parking there, that's a private parking garage, you have to have a sticker, blah, 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 I said, okay, so I went back across the street, and, uh, yes.
We go to Secretary of State's office, we have to park down a couple blocks, and then walk.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, next item of business is the Department of Local Affairs Planning Grant Application pertaining to our Justice Center, I believe we were provided a copy of the, of the letter that we were sending Ms. Doon, our regional rep for DOLA. Again, Ms. Brenda, thank you for your efforts on our behalf, nice document. Is there a way we can do with, do this without that shadowing at the bottom of that?
Um...
Of what?
Yeah, that's my printer, my print cartridge.
Looks like it's picking up some print from the other.
That's what I wondered, if it was from the copier itself.
It's a copy of the process.
Yeah.
Maybe it's not a big deal, I don't know.
You need a new cartridge, just have it...
Well, I'm gonna scan it and email it.
Oh, you are?
So it's not going to be...
As noticeable.
I, I use almost the same paper, and what I found is, they have two different kinds, one is called, it's, look identical, one's business and one's linen, the linen bleeds and looks terrible, okay, you knew that, okay.
Oh, no, it's okay.
So when I order it, I always make sure I get the business one, and then it goes to the printer, it's just beautiful, even though the color is identical.
It doesn't look super professional, in this case, if we're scanning, it may not matter, they don't need an original hard copy mailed, huh?
I don't think so.
So this is for the Justice Center planning?
Planning grant, yes, that's correct.
How much are we requesting?
Seventy-five K total project costs, and anticipated funds of $40,000 from underfunded courts grant, and 10 from the county.
We're, we're asking for 25 of DOLA.
Underfunded kicks in, DOLA we're asking, and we'll kick in.
So, 25 from DOLA, 45 from underfunded, and 10?
No, 40...
Forty.
Forty. And 10 from the county.
We would like to request 25,000 to be used in conjunction with anticipated funds of 40K from the underfunded courts grant, and 10K from the county.
Okay, thank you.
And the underfunded one is one you're going to on the...
Thirty, that's correct. Um, did we have a motion?
I move we sign it. I'll move it, he can second it this time.
You already signed it, they've been moving and seconded.
Moving on, boys.
Moving and seconded that we, uh...
Once, once noon hits.
It hit my, it hit my 12 o'clock whistle.
Unless you order pizza, all bets are off.
I thought it was one, I didn't know that.
It's noon.
They've been moving and seconded that we approve the letter requesting funding from DOLA for our Justice Center project, is there any further discussion? Public comment, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay, motion carries, we will sign said letter.
So I think that Mr. Kanda needs to resign since he...
Well, that's not a legitimate signature, it was pre, pre-motion.
Thank you, sir.
Then legally, since he already signed, if you two had not, he would've had to pony up the 10,000 himself.
He'd have had to pay the 10,000. Off the way with me, let's revisit that. Any further business to be conducted for the board?
I think we were very productive this morning.
Thank you, I just wanna back up, gentlemen, maybe you can help me here, the bid from Mountain Valley was 97,340, did anybody make a note of that?
Yeah, I think that was it.
It was 97,340.
Correct. And 70,750 from Cypher.
Correct.
Very, very, definitely, surprisingly, you would think they would be close to...
And it's very close to what we were doing.
Yeah, that's why I love that, we were gonna do it for basically the same as Cypher.
And they get it done a lot faster.
Come before the board at this time, hearing no objections, yes ma'am?
I just wanna say thank you for the Christmas party.
Oh, you're welcome.
We didn't say that before, and I...
The date to be selected by the group, right?
Yeah.
Okay, the time is 12 to 2.
It's usually that week, we, I mean, we try not to do it the week of Christmas, 'cause people are gone, it's, it plays 19, 20.
Always dicey.
I knew it.
Always dicey there, 12 to 2, is that the plan? Offsite, that's what you're gonna...
I think that's what we're gonna try.
Okay, well, you're welcome, no problems. Hearing no further objections, this meeting is adjourned, 12:31.
Good enough.
Thank you.